That up today and then 5.11 and 5.12 will be later on the agenda. Are there any others from the Board of Supervisors?
No.
No? You have any? And then, so anyone from the public can pull any consent agenda items as well if need be, and we can take those up as well at another time. All right, doesn't look like we have any, so we will go ahead and see if there's any action to be taken on. Well, there is, so if there's any action, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of 510, 511, 512.
I second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Next, we have our timed items. Public input 902, a little past that, but at the same time, we will go ahead and move forward. If I have one here, with public input, we will take any public comment for any item that's not, or any concern that's not on the agenda. Just know that we cannot comment or address the issue, but we will set you up with either your supervisor, or if you've spoke to your supervisor, get you in touch with who we need to in order to take up the issue or address your concern. And so, Angela, I see you. Would you like to start?
Hi, good morning, Board. Thank you for letting me speak during public comment. I wanted to let the Board know, as well as the public administration, that this Thursday, there's going to be a Clear Lake Hitch Community Outreach Presentation, right here in Board Chambers, from 5:30 to 7:30. So it's springtime, the Clear Lake Hitch are running, they're state-listed species that are very special to us here in Lake County, and this is an opportunity for the public to be able to listen in on some current activities that are going on with hitch, some of the activities at the state level. So we have presentations will be by the California State Water Resource Control Board, Habemutal Pomo of Upper Lake, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and then Lake County Watershed Protection District. This event is being sponsored by the Lake County Farm Bureau, so thank you to Rebecca over there at the Farm Bureau for putting this together. And this will be livestreamed on the County of Lake Facebook. Thanks to Sam for staying here late night on Thursday, helping us with that. And then it'll be recorded and available for future viewing on the Water Resources YouTube channel, and I believe the Farm Bureau one, but there will be, it will be available there. So I have flyers for the Board members and some extra ones for any members of the community, and we hope to see folks on Thursday to learn about the Clear Lake Hitch.
Thank you, Angela. Did you want to, are you finished, Angela?
Oh, thank you very much for your time. This ends my speech.
All right. Justin, did you want to come up? Did you fill out a paper as well? You can do it after, just that way you can submit for...
Help me with that.
Yeah, I'm sure we can get some help.
Hello, my name is Justin Quayle, owner of Pillsbury Family Farms. I'm a proud member of our Lake County community, and there's some things that need to be addressed about extorting people. I had been robbed by Maria, oh, I'm sorry, the Director of Community Development, and over a lot of the last two years, I've been in this relocation for two years. And we found out from the state that we had a license when our toxic cannabis was seized. We found out that there was no service of paperwork on my gate, there was no, and I've been watching and seeing that there's legal processes that you guys set up that were not followed. And that's very concerning, because I was told my greenhouse was the way that I was going to be relocated if I didn't get a demolition. I don't have the money to do that, but the grant paid for the demolition permit, but I'm not accessed to the grant because I'm kicked out of the grant program for filing complaints because of double payment. And in an email from the person said that I'm kicked out of the program, and he's part of my relocation because I made a double payment and complained about it. This is a problem. You have people that are overseeing your rules that you make and making their own decisions. Directors saying it's their self-determination that you don't deserve to carry their product. That's a problem. There's a power problem when you have, I'm going to clean up my criminal past. What was already cleared by the last sheriff, but this sheriff didn't, because I was tricked because of my disability. I am very upset. I've been the most transparent cannabis farmer here on every level, not just with you, with the DCC, the treatment that I've been covering, that I've been told through the DOJ, to the state, now the FBI, because she asked me to reach out to them to find out how I got my license. I got my license the legal way, the way that you guys set up. But she is, this person is tearing down what you guys built instead of getting the rules changed first. She is using me as a guinea pig, all the way down to cannabis tours, when I'm asking about them, oh, you're going to lose them for 10 years. But there's people out there doing it, they're not losing for 10 years. So when does the threat stop? I've been the most compliant. I got a lawyer in Sonoma County that says it's highly illegal what's going on. We are submitting the threats of going to solicit a police officer to expunge my record. That's not, the DOJ has rules, we have rules. We need to obey them.
If you can wrap up.
Yes, but this needs to be handled soon. Thank you.
Have a nice day, everybody. We love you. Can I make a comment? Mr. Quayle, you've been sending me a lot of correspondence on a, in a personal channel. Please, can you only use my county email address?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right. Mark Lips.
Honorable Chair and esteemed supervisors, I'm Mark Lips. We have the Ripe Choice Farm and Catering, plus former president of Lakeport Rotary, and now the area governor of the Lake County Rotary Clubs. What I would like to talk to you about is inviting you to our lunch tomorrow. We have Rain Howe coming up and speaking as, she's the executive director of the Poli Class Foundation. One of the things that I'm getting our Rotary Clubs to do is build awareness of human trafficking. And I hope that Poli will say some really relevant things. I've had her speak, she's speaking. She spoke at Clear Lake Rotary Club, and the Calzillo Rotary Club will be there tomorrow as well. What we want to do is, at some point, put billboards around the lake, we want to put posters in the schools, but I don't know if you guys realize, but California has now risen to be the number one state for human trafficking. And one of the corridors for that is Highway 20, from east to west. And we're an easy town, we're an easy county to hide in as well, or park your victims and then move them somewhere else. You don't hear much about it. I'm surprised there isn't more publicity out there about it, more stories done on investigative reporting, but one thing these guys hate is publicity. So if we can get these billboards, and we can get this noise made in the schools and around, then maybe we can drive them somewhere else. Hate to send it away to somebody, make it somebody else's problem, but that's what we do, and then hopefully they will fix it, and we continue to chip away at these guys. But we invite you to come to the lunch tomorrow's 12 noon at Lake Event Design, which is 1855 South Main Street in Lakeport, and come check it out and listen to what Rain has to say. But hopefully, you know, we can find some support at the county level as well when we get to really putting our plan into action. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any other public input? Anyone on Zoom? Sam, would you be able to promote, or, I don't know if Sam's... So while we're doing that, we'll move on. If we have to come back to public input, I'll, oh wait, there you go. Okay. All right, good thing we waited. All right, so we'll start out. Donna, if you can unmute and state your name for the record, you'll have your three minutes.
Good morning, Board. Donna McQuits, Red Bud Audubon, and I'll be fast. One of the many things to love about Lake County is bird watching. And recalling back in 2019, the Board signed the Night Sky Initiative, and shortly after came the announcement that the 2.5 million acre area of Lake County had been named the world's largest dark sky sanctuary. The supervisors recognized the importance of preserving our night sky. Red Bud Audubon, Lake County's chapter of National Audubon, primary focus is on the conservation of birds and their habitats, and wanted to share with you that every spring and fall, billions of birds migrate through Lake County, mostly under the cover of darkness. This mass movement of birds must contend with a dramatically increasing, but still largely unrecognized threat of light pollution. This past Saturday, an estimated 183,000 birds migrated through Lake County from 7:00 PM through Sunday at 7:30 AM, with a peak of 101,000 birds at the highest point measured. The data was captured by Birdcast using Doppler radar and helped follow how the birds are doing in these changing climate times. A few more details about Saturday's flight, their direction was north, the speed was 23 miles an hour, and the altitude was 1,400 feet. Lake County is recognized internationally as an important bird area, and I'd like to suggest that on the importance of the Night Sky Initiative, we could follow National Audubon's Lights-Out Program during peak migration time from March 1st to June 15th. The strategy is simple, just convince building owners, managers, and homeowners to turn off excess lighting during the migrations overhead, helping birds have safe passage from their nesting to wintering grounds, and turn off lights from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM during critical migration periods. Thank you for your time and for your dedication. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
iPhone XS Max, if you can unmute, you might have to press star six, and then state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. Hello, Board. My name is Skylar Leawall. I would like to make a comment because I just watched on Zoom Jessica Pisca speaking up during public comment when somebody was making a comment, and I feel that that was something that she or county council could have relayed in an email. If Eddie explained the rules that nobody from the Board has the right to speak during public comment, I'm wondering why she has the right to make that comment during public comment, and I see it as a violation of the Brown Act. On the other hand, yesterday in Potter Valley, somebody left a Frenchy, and she looked really lost, and we picked her up. She's on the Potter Valley Community page. If anybody knows of somebody who lost a Frenchy out there in that area, please go to Facebook and look on the Potter Valley page. We would like to spread awareness about this lost Frenchy. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and move on to 6.2, our pet of the week.
Hi, I'm Sarah Schramm with Lake County Animal Control. This week I have Jet with me. We brought Jet, we chose to bring Jet. He is about a year old. He is very gentle for how large of a dog that he is, and a lot of these dogs get overlooked in the shelter just due to their size. So we wanted to get him out and get him exposed to public. He's been at the shelter for almost two months, which is a long time for a puppy. So if you would like to come meet Jet, our address is 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, and come down and meet him, or one of the other big dogs. Come here, can you sit? He's not going to sit right now. Doing very good all morning. He's very gentle, though. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to our 6.3. Presentation of Proclamation Commending Operation Tango Mike for 22 Years of Service in Supporting Our Military Personnel Deployed Around the World. And Supervisor Sabatier will be reading it, and I'll be joining him.
I think we have a whole crew today. Please come on up, everybody. Jenny would really feel better if you came up. So today, we have a proclamation commending Operation Tango Mike for 22 years of service in supporting our military personnel deployed around the world. Whereas, Operation Tango Mike has supported deployed military personnel throughout Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation New Dawn, Operation Onward Liberty, Operation Odyssey Lightning, Operation Inherent Resolve, and Operation Freedom Sentinel, and just to let you know, there's more, but we have to stop at one point. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike has shipped more than 27,000 care packages to deployed personnel and assisted multitudes of military families. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike coordinates annual collection and distribution of Christmas gifts and school supplies for military families. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike has coordinated and hosted many welcome home celebrations and ceremonies for returning troops. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike has assisted in honoring three of Lake County's fallen heroes in the global war on terror. And whereas, the Secretary of Defense has recognized families and community members as the power behind the power. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike fills a crucial role in supporting family members and loved ones of our armed forces and provides a compassionate community and incalculable moral support to families and loved ones. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike will mark 22 years of unwavering support for military personnel and families on March 20th, 2025, and at their monthly packing party. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Operation Tango Mike for 22 years of service in supporting our military personnel deployed throughout the world, pass and adopted this 11th day of March 2025.
I want to thank the Board for the recognition and acknowledge that it's our community and our supporters and our awesome volunteers that have kept this going for 22 years. And, you know, the beat goes on. Troops are still deploying even though we don't hear about it. I got a Facebook message this morning from a young Marine that said, "I'm about to be in a foreign country in a very unfriendly place. My buddies and I would sure appreciate some support." So of course, the answer was yes. So we'll be packing for him on Thursday. And, you know, we're free for a reason, and that's those people that voluntarily raise their hand and stand on that line and sign. And, you know, when you came here this morning, I bet nobody thought you were going to run over an IED in the road or get hit by a rocket-propelled grenade here, and there's a reason for that as well, and it's our military. So please, support our troops, honor our veterans, and never forget our fallen.
And I believe that we have a extra video to come along with this presentation. Sam, if it's possible, to pass this video.
Jenny Craven, thank you very much for all you do and for your great success with Operation Tango Mike. You've had an incredible run of 22 years, delivered 27,000 care packages, you've put together a volunteer cadre that helps you do that, and together, all of you and your great work have really improved the lives of people who serve in the military around the world. Your work is important, it's appreciated, and I just can't thank you enough for all that you do. Keep it going, Jenny, you rock.
Thank you very much. Jenny, just want to say thank you for your 22 years of service. We were just talking a little earlier about all the logistics that you have to go through in order to get all these packages done. Hopefully, we'll do like we've done in the past. We'll print out this proclamation in order to have those handed out into the care packages. Again, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
So, real quick, I know that before I've talked about how I was deployed as a soldier as well, and how a lot of the packages help with morale and whatnot. So what I really want to, you know, expand on is the fact that a lot of these soldiers at times are in these zones, they don't know if they're, you know, it comes to your mind, you realize, okay, I may not go home. So when you have a little bit of letters and support from the home front, you actually feel a lot better. Any little thing that reminds you of home brings you to a point of at least wanting to move on another day, or, you know, you have a little bit of motivation. And so, this work that, you know, Tango Mike does is very important, it's very special. I know it was special to me, being deployed. And so, the amount that it takes, and it keeps expanding, to send these packages when it comes to postage, and then the rules, they're always ever-changing. You have to write different things, you can't write specific, and so just know that. And at one time, I think it might still be 5,000 a month, you know, but it's going up, you know, it keeps going up. And so, I know that working with different businesses and agencies to try and support and work with Tango Mike to, you know, do some fundraisers and whatnot, and so if you know anyone out there that's willing to partner as well, or has places where they can do their volunteer work, because they come out and try to sell, or auction, or, you know, sell tickets so they can go to an event or anything like that, so just know that that's what it takes. It takes quite a bit. So if you're looking to donate too, it's a good nonprofit, so I just wanted to pull that, put that plug out there for you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. I was... Photo. Hold on, we got to do the picture.
I, you know, when my brother was deployed, and I think I shared this with you before, it was before you started doing these packages, but just hearing from family members how much these, these packages mean and those connections from home, like Chair Crandall mentioned, I have deep appreciation for the work that you do. I wish I didn't have a standing meeting every month on your packing night, so if you ever have other opportunities, please let me know.
We're doing a fundraiser.
Okay.
Follow our Facebook.
Okay.
Real quick, if there's any other public comment, I didn't open that up. Any on Zoom? All right, we'll go ahead and do the picture, Sam, we're ready.
There we go. I have to turn to supervisor.
Okay.
Is I hiding you? Okay. Someone's yelling. Yeah, right there. Perfect. That looks, oh, this is great. Let me get this. Okay. Let me get one more, just in case I can find somebody smiling, and one more. There we go. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of Letters of Support for the Lake County Historical Society Application for Grant Funding, and this is sponsored by Supervisor Pisca.
Well, I would just like to invite Dr. Parker up to the podium, and he can introduce this item.
Good morning, you guys. What a morning, huh? I think most of you have been to the Eli. If you haven't, you better get out there. I know that guy's been there regularly. We got a donation this year of 17 beautiful horse-drawn carriages, all different kinds. In fact, stand up, you guys. This is just one of the carriages, and this particular one was used in San Francisco to take women from the Presidio downtown to shop and then back to the Presidio. It's a very fancy, it's called an omnibus. We also have a 1906 original US Postal Delivery wagon, horse-drawn delivery wagon. We've got a sheepherder's wagon, we've got a freight wagon, we've got, I mean, we've got beautiful three or four surries, you know, with the fringe and everything, plus regular, everyday people's get-around-town carriages. And it's just an amazing collection. They're all immaculately restored, and you can hook up a horse to any one of them right now, today, and take it around town. This collection, in order to keep it together and have it available for the public for educational purposes, Carol Biggs wanted to donate it locally, so she came to the Historical Society, we looked everything over, and she donated a whole bunch. Right now, most of them are in a hangar over here at Lamson Field. We need a carriage display house at the Eli Museum to display these carriages. We've put together a grant proposal to the Hobson Lucas Foundation. You probably heard of George Lucas. Anyway, he and his wife have a foundation, they give grants for this kind of thing, and we put together the proposal, we sent it off. We need some support for that proposal, so we came to you for this, for a support letter, and, you know, it's just, it's just an amazing opportunity. There's only one other museum in California that really has a collection of carriages this big, and it's down in San Diego, so unless you want to drive through LA to get there, you're not going to see them. But the collection is really neat because it gives you all the different types of transportation that happened here in California, for all the different, oh, I guess you would say, classes of people, all the different types of industries, you know, from, you know, the take-your-stuff-to-market wagons to something as fancy as this. I mean, when it's raining in San Francisco, the driver can be inside that thing with the leads going out to the horses through little holes in the front window. So, you know, it's just like, perfect, you know, you've got your nice hat on, your beautiful parasol, and you don't get wet in San Francisco. It's just an amazing thing, and I think if we can get this done, we're going to be the second-only museum in California that has a collection of carriages and wagons like this. The lady that donated them has a stipulation. Whenever she wants to bring over a horse and hook one up and take it out, she has the ability to do that. That was her stipulation. The other stipulation was to keep them all together and in a protected environment so that they will last as long as possible. Anyways, I want to thank you all for, for helping out with, with this grant application, with your letter of support, and come on out to the Eli. We are the only all-volunteer, all-donation-run museum in Lake County. So, yeah, we don't, we don't get any funds from anybody, it's just, these two ladies run the whole museum right here. We actually have about 30 really good volunteers that come out. If you haven't been to the Fiddler's Jam once a month, come out to the Fiddler's Jam, it's a blast. We're doing everything to make, raise money for this thing. This is a, we got a GoFundMe page. We're also in, on July, June 7th, we're going to have a huge hoedown with the Fargo Brothers Band and a big barbecue and everything to raise money for this project right here. And come on out to the Eli and check it out.
Great, thanks, John.
All right.
Dr. Parker, we're so lucky to have this museum and this collection, and we want to do what we can to help it be protected and also let the people of Lake County be able to see, to see the carriages.
All right.
Happy to support this letter.
Thank you. Dr. Parker, I appreciate all the work that you do when it comes to this historic, especially volunteers. You know, as, as I've learned from you, the whole purpose of any type of archaeology or history is to, to know how we've lived and to keep that preserved. of any type of archaeology or history is to know how we've lived and to keep that preserved, you know, even when it dates back further than, you know, in the, you know, times before, you know, settlement or anything like that. It's knowing how we've lived so that we can learn from that. And if we don't keep that, you know, preserved, and we don't, you know, have the accurate information and, you know, the carriages or any of the artifacts in place, then, you know, it gets distorted, and it's just the way that things happen. So it's very important that we support and ensure that a lot of this is preserved. So I just wanted to thank you on that. I'm in support of this, obviously. And I think that I got a couple pens up here. So I'll start with Vice Chair, and then you have one too? All right.
Yeah, this is an amazing museum that we have out here available, and I'm highly in support of this, and wish there was more we could do at this point, but I think it's something that we need to continue to be engaged with into the future and make sure that, you know, we help where we can. This is also a huge part of our economic development when we can, you know, encourage people to come in here from other areas and visit the Eli stage and the other museums that we have. So, thank you.
Supervisor, and then Supervisor Owen.
Yeah, just real quick, and I don't mean to nitpick on there, but it says, we've seen tourists from 13 countries, 34 states, and then it says 142 California counties.
Oh, cities, I'm sorry.
Okay. I was wondering if we needed to say 42 counties?
Right, I don't think we have that many.
So if we can change that to cities, that would be perfect. That would be the only thing that I would make a request for change. Other than that, fully support it. Thank you for bringing this to us, and glad people are continuously donating to enhance our museum experience.
Yeah, it's great. You know, this county really is, well, the Tango Mike folks are a good example. This county really is all about giving back and, you know, giving to the public and trying to make the world a better place for those that come after us. You know, that's my whole life is, you know, my dad taught me that, you know. We're only here for a short amount of time. So while you're here, try to make this a little bit better for those that come after us. All right.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you for putting this together. This is really exciting for me. And I know my grandfather drove some of the wagons, you know, and the stages and the wagons here in Lake County, in South County, and in and out of the mines. And so this is pretty exciting, and I would love to come and see you guys, and I might even have some stuff I might want to donate.
Well, we're always open, looking for new ways to present history to the public. I, myself, you know, I've gone to museums my whole life. And a lot of museums, you just walk in, and there's a display, and you look at it, and you read something, and you don't really experience history. You just kind of, you know, you learn about it. But for me, it's a hands-on thing. I want to go in, I want to smell history. I want to taste it. I want to see it in action, you know. When we put together the, our blacksmith shop, that's perfect. You walk in there, you smell the coal burning. You hear the sounds. You see what's going on, you know. It's, that, to me, that's what a museum should be doing. And I think these wagons, these wagons and carriages, they're going to walk right into that, you know. It's perfect. That's why we have the Fiddler's Jam once a month, you know. You go there, you can see the music, you can hear the music, you can dance to the music, you know. It's like stepping back into the 1860s, 1870s, and, you know, it's, we don't have time machines, but if we did, I'd certainly want to use one, you know. I'd want to go back and talk to EJ's great-great-great-great-grandparents. I mean, we got 700 generations of Native American people in Lake County. That's history. I mean, that's, you know.
You're a big part of helping preserve that. I know that, you know, I was reading through my aunt's information over the weekend, and your name was listed on the Robinson Rancheria when they initiated in the 80s. And your name was listed on there. I was like, I didn't know he was part of Robinson too, of that, you know, so it's just...
I did the original archaeological survey for that land when it was put into status for the reservation. And, yeah, it's, I've been doing this since 1971 in Lake County, where this county is just like the end of the rainbow. If you're interested in history and prehistory, I mean, the oldest lake in the Americas, does it get any better than that? You know, it doesn't, you know. But thank you.
We're using these carriages up into the 20s and 30s, and I think even close to the 40s, because my great aunt Frida, I'm sure you know, said when she was young, when they would drive out to like the Yocha de Haye tribe to go, you know, visit for funerals, she said, we'd get on the carriage and, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
They were using it that far in, so.
Yeah, no, it's amazing, you know. And it, yeah, it's just, to be a part of it here in Lake County is just fairly, really special, I think. And, you know, just thank you all for all your support. Come out to the Eli. We're having a blast out there.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead and open it up to the public, if there's any comments that anyone would like to make. Anyone on Zoom? Oh, look, we have someone. Thank you.
Hi, Elaine Brown. I just, I walked in late, so I don't know, like, for marketing of your place, I don't know, like, in the fall, if you can have like a fall festival down in Lakeport, or like for Christmas, where I'm from, Visalia, at Christmas time, they have drawn, horse-drawn carriages, like on Thursday night, and it's part of the, they're open till 8:00 PM, and then it's just part of the fun of having a horse-drawn carriage. So it might be a way to market, but you might have already talked about that, so just putting that out there.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah, thank you.
Any one on Zoom? All right. With that, bring it back to the board and...
All right. Well, before I make the action, I just want to remind everyone that you can join the Historical Society. There's all different levels. You can make an annual contribution, right, to the society, and Fiddler's Jams are the first Sunday of the month. They're always really fun. If you haven't been Supervisor Owen, check it out, especially in the spring.
First Saturday or Sunday?
First Sunday.
Okay, this has June 7th?
That's...
That's the hoedown.
That's the hoedown, but there's the monthly Fiddler's Jam. All right, and I move that we approve the letter of support for the Lake County Historical Society Application for Grant Funding and authorize the chair to sign as amended.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 500. All right. Next, we have the 6.5, Consideration of Presentation by UCC-E of the Beneficial Burning and Land Stewardship Program, and the UC Extension will be coming up. Matthew Barnes will be leading this, doing the intro.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Matthew Barnes, Area Director, University of California Cooperative Extension. I'm here this morning to introduce Ally Sung Jazernik, our new Beneficial Burning and Tribal Land Stewardship Academic Advisor. Ally's been with us for just about five months now, and her position is the first of three created by a larger initiative from the University of California. There's three positions throughout the state meant to engage with tribal nations throughout the state. Ally comes to us with a bachelor's degree in Conservation Biology from UCLA, and a master's degree in Environmental Justice and Ecosystem Science Management from the University of Michigan, where her graduate research focused on community-based participatory research and tribal partnerships. So with that, I will let Ally take it over.
Yeah, I have the top of the mic.
Hello. Hi, yeah, I'm Ally Sung Jazernik. Nice to meet you guys. As Matthew stated, I'm the UC Cooperative Extension Beneficial Burning and Tribal Land Stewardship Advisor. A little bit about me, since I am new, and just one formal introduction, and Matthew already kind of went through some of that, but originally I grew up on Moakba Aloney Territory in the East Bay Area in Oakland. And I did my bachelor's degree at UCLA in Geography and Environmental Studies and Conservation Biology. And then I did my master's at University of Michigan, doing environmental justice, behavior, education, communication, ecosystem science management, where I worked with the Sioux-Saint-Murray Tribe in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, if you guys know where that is. It's a really beautiful place, really special for the tribe up there, working on a co-management plan with the university and the tribe, and some of those negotiations and facilitations for those listening sessions. Some of my focus research and areas of experience, just a really broad overview, obviously indigenous rights and self-determination. I had a really great indigenous professor, Kyle White, who I learned a lot from, and kind of was able to take men's wing and kind of show me a lot of, just about cultural burning and about the tribes in general, and tribal sovereignty, and as well as data sovereignty. And I really worked with the community and learning and learning and hearing from them, and a lot about community-based participatory research, as well as the fire history and ecology. I also worked a lot in fire suppression policies, climate adaptation and resilience, and a lot of my other background work. And one of the reasons I think I was hired for this position was for regulatory support for the tribes with sequin NIPA planning, as well as potentially biological monitoring. And so that's a really broad overview. And the overall program goals and objectives, the overarching goal for this position is supporting tribal communities and building a more fire-resilient ecosystem that aligns with their social, economic, and cultural priorities. And a lot of that will be determined by the tribes. And I know this position has been in the works for the past year or so, but I really want to hear from the tribes and have them lead and determine what this role looks like going forward. And so a lot of what the next year will be going forward will be just establishing relationships and doing introductions like this. And then I have a needs assessment that I'll be doing, which will dictate kind of how the program looks. Again, we'll just be kind of going through and listening and learning from each of the tribes here, because there's so many, and having them kind of determine what this program will look like going forward, as well as hopefully fostering reciprocal partnerships. And I'm really wanting to hope that this role will be equal, and we all will be at the table determining what this looks like going forward for the university and the tribes here in Lake and Mendocino Counties. And some of the work going forward, potentially down the line, will be organizing educational workshops and community events for the tribes and for community members at large. And from what I've heard so far, and some of the support that some of the tribes are potentially needing is potentially pre- and post-fire monitoring, supporting culturally significant species, and other tribal stewardship priorities. And that's just a small part, and that's totally going to be determined as I learn more and hear more from the tribes later this year. So that was a really broad overview, and I'm sure a lot of people have a lot of questions, and there's a lot to be discussed for this. And so, yeah, I can open it up to the floor or anyone.
Oh, you got it? Okay, well, thank you for that overview. I know, Matthew, when you started, we talked about tribal engagement and whatnot. I know that there's a very difficult task to burn on actual tribal lands, but I do know that the territories, you know, when it comes to cultural artifacts and whatnot, so like, different areas that the tribes have ancestral ties to, they work in those areas to do the burning and whatnot. And so I think that's where it's going to come in handy with the partnership on that. And then also, later on, we have a presentation by Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, and I'm not sure if you met with them yet or anything like that, but that's, they do the majority of that work. They're a nonprofit. Of course, everyone knows that. I'm just saying it again for the... So I'll leave it to, I think Supervisor Pyska, you have a...
I'm delighted to meet you. We have been working in collaboration with the Risk Reduction Authority, with the local governments and tribal governments for many years, expanding capacity and working to also expand collaboration and co-stewardship. And I'm super excited that my Terra friends are here today. But I want to invite you to the Risk Reduction Authority meetings, if you're able to. We have a slot every, it's the third Monday of the month, and we do have a slot for UC Extension to participate. It's very exciting to have even more resources to help bring the good fire back to the land. So thank you for coming, and thank you, Matt, for bringing her. I'm just beyond excited that you're here today and ready to join us.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Yeah, no, welcome to the team, and I think that your goals are necessary goals for Lake County to reduce, mitigate all the fires that we've been experiencing. My curiosity, I guess, is, so we passed not too long ago, and maybe I'm overlapping things that shouldn't overlap, but we passed not too long ago the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the CWPP. I think that's the acronym for it. And we had a kind of a fluid exhibit section, and we approved just not too long ago the Lake County Fire Protection District for their specific projects. As you work with all the different tribes throughout Lake County, will that potentially come out as an exhibit that can get added to the CWPP? So we are all aware of all the different projects and how to align our projects to work together, rather than it being separate.
You know, I don't know. I think I would say that it could be added. I know that the CWPP, I think, was just recently developed, right? And so I don't know what the process would be to get that in there, but I think could definitely be something we can look at going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You can connect with Terry Logston in our office. She's our Climate Resiliency Officer, who's, for the county's part, been managing the CWPP.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think I might have heard. Yeah. Great to meet you.
Right. All right, she's here, and then we'll follow up. And I think in the risk reduction, they might talk about it as well. Another thing, just to add, is that, like last year, there was an opportunity, and it ceased pass because of the fire, the fire danger at times. We get those red flag warnings. But a lot of work for vegetation in general, for fuel reduction, but then there's also, a lot of our tributaries have a lot of vegetation in them, and one of the best attributes, or one of the best methods, is to burn them, especially when we're looking at some of the permits that we have to deal with in regards to the state. And so since it's not a disturbance to the actual channel, per se, the burning might come in handy, you know. So I think with that partnership with the other nonprofit and some others, I think that might be something we can do, because it's, they're definitely needed, you know, because of the flooding, so.
Yeah.
It's great to see the work. I appreciate it, and thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thanks for having me. And yeah, I'm definitely interested in fire and water, and kind of those intersections and all of that. So, thanks for having me.
All right, there's no one else from the board. We'll open it up to the public. Anyone on Zoom? All right, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Good? All right. We will move on to, or should we take the break?
Actually, we can take one quick item, and then IT will be down here at 10 o'clock.
Okay, one quick item.
7.3.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead and take 7.3 up. All right, Consideration of Updates to the 2025 Board of Supervisors Committee Assignment List, and we will have Carolyn come up.
Hello?
Yep.
Good morning, Board. Today before you is an update on your 2025 Board of Supervisors Committee Assignment List. So these items that are on the memo were either not included or had been updated from the original assignments on January 7th. And the one that I would like to bring to your attention is the Tree Mortality Task Force. We're going to ask that you remove this from consideration today, and it can be addressed at a later date as needed. And then the rest of them are just updates to make sure that we are transparent with all of the assignments that the board is tasked with. So if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I guess my quick question is, are we removing that because we've had it on our agenda to... because we've had it on our agenda to approve as a official committee, and we haven't quite done that yet? Is that the reason?
There's some other information that has come to light that we're going over that would determine that this does not need to be on the committee assignment list. And we can discuss that at a later date.
Okay.
All right, any other board comments? Did you have one?
No.
Oh, so I'll open it up to the public, if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item. No Zoom? All right, bring it back to the board.
Well, with that, Chair Crandall, I would move to approve the updates to the 2025 BOSS Committee Assignment List with the exception of the Tree Mortality Task Force.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you very much, we'll go ahead and take the break, come back together at 10:05. All right, and you give your internet.
Welcome back from short, well, short break I'll say, and we'll move on to the next item. It is 6.6, consideration of presentation to accept and file the 2025 Roads Project and the 2026 Regional Transportation Plan/Active Transportation Plan Update. This is by Public Works. Glenn March is the Director and he'll be presenting this. It's Glenn March, like March or the month. Sorry about that. I don't know why I said Mark.
Good morning Chair Crandall and members of the Board. My name's Glenn March, the Public Works Director. I'm here to provide an update on the road work that we intend to do this year in the county. I don't, I'm not going to address the bridge work or landslide work as part of this presentation because I think we want to focus on roads. Our Road Division, the Public Works Road Division, is going to do 37 miles of chip seal this year in Kelseyville and in Lower Lake. We are going to bring a contract, construction contract to the Board in the next, probably the next meeting on the 28th, to award the construction contract for the Cobb Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project. We're currently working on the Kelseyville Sidewalk Project in the environmental phase. It's already been designed, so once the environmental phase gets done and we secure the funding for construction, we'll advertise a project. And we're also doing the speed signs throughout the county. As far as the designs go, we are going to wrap up the design of the South Main Street Project and Sota Bay Road Project. We also are going to do the Nice Lucerne Cut Off, the east portion, that has a very low PCI index. And I'm going to conduct, I'm going to hire an engineer to conduct a study of our school areas and our business districts just for the installation of additional signage or appropriate signage, as well as do pavement markings. And this will be our crews that will be doing that work. Oh, I did mention landslide repair projects. So I think we have about five landslide repair projects that we're going to begin design on. Someone expressed interest in Morgan Valley Road. Last week we had our, got, received our funding letter from Caltrans. So we'll be getting started on that project very soon. We probably have 20 bridge repair and replacement projects. And we do intend to begin the design of the, all the, where we have belly bridges, the temporary bridges, we're going to begin the design of the replacements of those. We're also going to do pedestrian crossings at schools throughout the county, as well as Main Street in Lower Lake. So in the next few weeks, I'll be bringing a contract for grant writing and support services. So we're going to aggressively pursue grants for projects. We have some consultants very interested, so I'm looking forward to getting them on board. We applied for a $21 million grant for the South Main Street and Sota Bay Road widening. That was submitted in, end of January. We intend to submit a grant applicant, a CDBG grant application for the next road rehabilitation project. And I would like to get stip funding for the Nice Lucerne Cut Off Pavement Reconstruction. So I want to discuss the 2026 Regional Transportation Plan and Active Transportation Plan Update? Oh, sorry. So the importance of these plans, these two plans, along with our local road safety plan, is to identify projects that help us get grant funding. These plans identify the most important projects in the county. And because these are countywide plans, we cite these pro, these plans and the projects within the plan in all our grant applications. So when developing our list of plans, I believe these plans need to be updated thoroughly. First opportunity to identify future projects is our Capital Improvement Plan. So we'll be presenting that later this year, early summer. And I have listed projects which the community and the Board members have provided me input that they would like to see. And we will, as part of the CIP plan, I would appreciate your input about what your vision is for the county and roadway and bridge infrastructure projects. So the different type of projects, the plans, or the Regional Transportation Plan, which lists our major projects, sorry. And I mentioned this is very important to obtaining grants. So listing projects in our Capital Improvement Plan, we won't identify any priority, but as funding opportunities become available, we will identify projects that fall under that particular grant and apply for those grants. Projects that have been, if... So these are the projects that are currently listed on the 2022 Regional Transportation Plan. It's the South Main Street widening and bicycle lanes, the Sota Bay Road widening and bicycle lanes, pavement reconstruction and rehabilitation in general, and bridge replacement and repair in general. So what we want to do as part of our update is identify specific plans or specific projects because they carry more weight than general projects. So what projects I've identified so far is reconstruct our arterial and collector roads, as well as landslide repair projects. So, so we need to think about what other projects we need. So the 2022 Active Transportation Program projects, again, our South Main Street widening project and Sota Bay Road widening projects are listed there. We have the Middletown Multi-Use Path that we finished up, the Kelseyville Road Safe Routes to School Pedestrian Improvements. There's a Bridge Auburn North Bike Way, and the Rainbow Road Complete Streets Improvements. So, so these are projects, we're out of order here. There's additional projects here that are listed from the 2022 Active Transportation Plan. And many of these are just simply pedestrian improvements. And those are sidewalk improvements primarily or trails. So my goal is to list more comprehensive projects, street improvements, safe routes to school projects, complete streets projects, and any other type of bikeways projects. So you can see, I've listed some projects here, complete street projects downtown Kelseyville, downtown Lower Lake, and safe routes to school projects. So here's some more. Lake Street pedestrian and bike way improvements, Country Club Drive pedestrian, pedestrian bike way improvements, Lake Shore Boulevard pedestrian bike way improvements. So what other type of projects do you foresee or would like to see in the county? So these are not near-term projects. These are long-term projects that we can identify funding for in the future. So that concludes my presentation.
Do we talk about them now, or, I know I've met with you. Okay.
We'll, we'll talk about it when we present the CIP, and we'll also talk about it at a later date.
Okay, I've, the only thing I see that's really critical will be the Morgan Valley Slip.
So we spoke about, we received a funding letter from Caltrans where we have received funding for the Morgan Valley Landslide Repair Project.
Okay.
We received that in the last week.
Okay, so when do we look at possibly getting started on that? I know the residents out there are really nervous.
Yeah. So we'll get started on design in the next month or so. So, and I'm uncertain how long the design will take right now.
And you have something that could go over to Bridgette if it fails before then, before you're able to be done?
I think we do.
Okay. We just don't want them stuck.
Right.
Thank you.
Well.
Oh, I didn't see you, sorry.
That's okay. This is exciting and happy to hear we're going after so many grant opportunities and, and bringing on some contract support for that. It's been needed for a long time. Can you talk a little bit more about the studies around the schools and what your plan is for that? I know we have a new school in Kelseyville that wants some signage, and I know you have a plan for the whole county. So can you just talk a little bit more about that?
So around school areas, what I intend to do for this study is I am going to look at the speeds at schools. I am going to look at additional signage for school area signs as provided for in the manual uniform traffic control devices. And I'm going to look at pavement markings that can be added to make it safer. The study will also identify future improvements that can be incorporated as a, as a safe routes to school projects. So you'll, with schools, we are doing our pedestrian improvements at all, most, many of the schools in the county. So that's a project that is currently awaiting for additional funding. Originally, we proposed $250,000 for the improvements. We were able to get Caltrans to give us another $750,000 for those improvements. So, so that's my plan for school areas currently.
Okay. And then, how are things going with PG&E and coordinating these road projects with the undergrounding work that they're doing?
So most of the PG&E undergrounding work is near completion. There'll be smaller projects. They plan on doing work on 175, but it's mostly overhead work that they're doing, strengthening their overhead lines.
So, sorry I haven't chatted with you about this lately, but what about the plans to do the undergrounding in Bottle Rock?
I'm not certain about that. It's not a near-term project to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. All right, we'll talk more.
I have one more thing. There's some schools that I don't know if you're aware of them. They're private schools and, and I think daycares or preschools. They're on, I think is it Washington Street in Middletown, across from the church. And it takes up a full block. And there's, it's missing stop signs. And I believe Lyndon Darnes has gotten in touch with you about that. So if the signage in those areas could be fixed, that would be amazing.
Just so you know, this has been a big issue in Middletown. And I, I've had staff look, and they have, I've been told by the residents in Middletown that stop signs were removed at one time.
That's true.
And I have no records of where signs were originally located.
I think Lynda has that. Lyndon Darnes has that. I can have her get in touch with you.
She's provided me the information, but I have no record of that. So, I mean, from a county standpoint, so.
So what's the solution?
If we're going to, we need to have a traffic engineer review and provide stop sign, stop sign warrant studies.
Okay, I think that she might even have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know a former employee looked at some of those locations, but we don't have any finalized stamped documents. So.
And just as a potential suggestion for that, I know that Davey Bates and Associates, Dow and Associates, they do a lot of traffic studies for us. And maybe that's where some of those came in, because I know I was working on a stop sign as well, and needed to go through the Dow and Associates for their studies, so that we have liability taken care of before we install new signs. And I'm sure that's what you're looking for, is those types of reports. So maybe they were involved, maybe not, but if they were, that would save you a whole lot of time by being able to get those reports. So I'm hoping that this is the first of multiple conversations regarding roads. My, my one thing that I don't see is dollar signs. I know that we've been kind of saving up a little bit of money in order to spend it, so that we can get a lot of projects done. But we also have this 10-year plan, which right now we're kind of identifying potentially two years' worth of, of projects. Where are we in that 10-year plan? Are we revamping the 10-year plan? Because even our 10-year plan was unaffordable for the type of activities that needed to happen on our roads to really bring it up to a certain PCI amount. And so I'm kind of wanting to go back to that bigger picture of what is our incoming revenues from roads? Obviously, you're working on grants, which I greatly appreciate in order to complement that dollars, the dollar figure that we're already receiving from state and federal. Just to kind of map out, are we getting a whole lot done? And then we're going to see a huge off the cliff and not get a whole lot done, because the amount of money we have currently is more than what we are receiving annually. And just to kind of get that bigger picture. So I'd love to see dollar signs of what is the anticipated amount, even though without an engineer's cost, it's probably going to be difficult to be exact. But just to get an idea of what we're looking at, how much money will be left over, what the following years might look like. And so I'm hoping that can be possible. It sounds like you're coming back to us, but I hope that we can get that level of detail to better strategize and understand what we're asking you, because I could tell you all kinds of roads that I think need help. But if I'm just throwing out ideas and not understanding what that means to the actual plan and to the dollars that we have, then I'm just not helping you, in my opinion. So just wanted to put that out there for the, when we get back to another item on roads, if we can get a little bit more of that specificity and review, is the 10-year plan being altered entirely? Are we keeping it to a certain degree? And what, what's our hopes and anticipation?
So when I bring the contract amendment for the 2025 Pavement Rehabilitation Project, I will give an update on the overall pavement rehabilitation program.
Perfect. And then one final comment, and I apologize to Chair Crandall. I know it's entirely in your district, but interconnects both of ours together.
I was waiting to say, go ahead.
Then I will, I will pass on that.
Go ahead, I have others.
Sulfur Bank Road, I know, is an unfortunate situation where we did resolve the one-lane area, but then some slipouts occurred. I believe now there's one area, there was two at one point, but now there's one area that has slipped out. And I know that if there's a fire again, like the sulfur fire that we experienced in 2017, that is absolutely a escape route for certain people, depending on where the fire is, and a entry route for certain people, depending on where the fire is. And so having that interconnection between the Clear Lake Park area and the Clear Lake Oaks and Elam Tribe is, is an important thing for me.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Director March. There's a lot in here. I appreciate, you know, the, all the thought and work that's going into looking at these things. I appreciate the arterial and collector streets. I mean, those are important to keep in good shape, because if we let them get, get bad, then it costs a lot more money than it would to maintain them. I appreciate the hard work to try to bring in more money for grants and funding, particularly the South Main and Sota Bay Road. Those are very important projects. So I'm hoping that we're successful there, and they can be priorities. I know that they're on the radar. I wanted to mention it because we got a public comment about Elk Mountain Road going up, out of Upper Lake into Lake Pillsbury. We got a public comment today for this meeting about it being in the county road section being in bad shape right now. So I don't know what is or isn't going on up there, but I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, because that comes up as a concern in the public from time to time, being really the, the main, from our county, the main route up to the Lake Pillsbury community. But thank you for all the information.
Just to, we have, we have two landslide repair projects on Elk Mountain Road that we have recently gotten funding for, so we'll begin those soon. We also have been working with the National Forest Service, or is that right, on a plan to address some of those roads and work together with them to address roads in their area at the same time we address the county roads.
Thank you for answering that. I was going to mention that, too. Wanted to make sure that it was said here. I'm, I have three town halls. I know you attended one in discussing the, I don't know what happened. Oh, there you go. Sorry. So as I was saying, a couple of the things I was going to bring up have been brought up, especially with the Elk Mountain. I knew that that was going to be applied for some funding before, and I think it's looking like it's coming to, closer to being done. I know that, I was talking about the town halls. I know you've come to a couple of them. Initially, a couple of years back, or a year and a half back, there was a five-year plan that turned into a 10-year plan. And the, the priority or the, the way that it was going to be done had changed tremendously. However, I know that when working with the Capital Improvement Plan, I know you have mentioned some of the projects, and I've given you the, the actual most dire, I think, in the district. And I know they revolve around bridges as well. I know that with Spring Valley, they, they need an alternate route. And I know you had helped me identify that, so I was able to tell the CSA that that is on the Capital Improvement Plan, which we'll be looking at in June. Same with the Lucerne Bridge, is that is a very big issue because of the danger and the need for another route when it comes to the folks in the, you know, with the fire department when they have to go and help with that. So the, the schools, I know you mentioned the school, the school studies and whatnot. I know in Upper Lake, they had been basically talking about this for quite some time already, as it is. And previously, they had talked about speed bumps and different measures when it comes to signage and things like that. And so they, they being the town hall, has been monitoring a lot of this. So they, they understand and know already that there is speed issues. And so when, they were told before, prior to your service, of course, that there would be studies, and then now there's going to be other studies, it gets real frustrating for these areas. And there's, you know, Upper Lake, Lucerne, and Clear Lake Oaks has issues with that same thing on Country Club. So it's good to see that. I just, a timeline, do you think that's going to be something we talk about in capital improvement, or is that just something when it comes to the schools, the safe schools?
So that's, that'll be part of the CIP discussion.
Okay.
But I may get started on it earlier.
Okay.
We're going to use local funds to fund that project, so.
Yes, and I, and I appreciate also, we've been discussing some of the roads and whatnot here and there. And I think that just looking at some of the areas in District 3 as the CIP, that's what we have to go by, right? And so I understand, too, that when it comes to CIP, low CIP, and talking with you and then also Director DeLeon, previous Director DeLeon, at times it comes into which, which roads are traveled most. With CIP, with regard to CIP, I know at times there's constituents that are frustrated with their roads, per se, but then at times, if it's not something that's highly traveled when it comes to this situation, the CIP and the most traveled take some sort of priority. Didn't know if that's still accurate, or if, if that's how that works.
So our road crews concentrate on our more heavily trafficked, more heavily used roads. And they do a once-a-year plan, and they circle the count, the lake in five years. So once every five years, there should be a chip seal program within each specific area. And those take care of the most, the busiest roads. And then I identified our arterial roads and collector roads. And they're published on Caltrans Functional Use Website. And everybody can see them there. And just to talk about the rehabilitation plan for one second. And just to talk about the rehabilitation plan for one second, the plan that discussed going, addressing roads in a, excuse me, in a counterclockwise fashion, that was one scenario of three scenarios provided. And I think that was a scenario that required additional $12.5 million per year. So scenario one, where we have no additional funding, and scenario three, which had additional funding, did not, was not, did not take into account that counterclockwise plan to address it. So, so anyways, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah. And I think, too, when going over the, one of the first plans, I know that they had a consultant conduct the work on the, the different plans previously. And some of the roads, I know at different entities, we would discuss how some of those weren't even really traveled or anything. And so when they did the, the secondary study, it somewhat had the same. So I'm glad to see that, like, you all are working on the more, with a more local mindset, if you will. Because I know before, they were using some roads that were way out of the area. I don't even think anyone used, you know. So it's just because that consultant didn't have any knowledge of how the local roads really worked. So just wanted to give you that insight as well. But, but again, like, you and I have been, been talking about some specific things as well, so.
So scenario one, which had no additional funding, other than our SB1 funds, was not organized in a cost-effective way. So for each year, it may have a road and multiple roads in different areas of the county, where, where it's more cost-effective to work in one particular area, so you don't have to remobilize equipment all over the county, so.
I seen Supervisor Sabatier.
And I'll agree with you that being able to make an impact in one area, even people who don't live in that area will recognize that work is getting done. If we do one road everywhere, most people won't see that. So having a, a large project in one focused area has, as I think has proven to work in other areas. I just want to make a statement. I'm not going to ask for necessarily further discussion, but maybe it's something you might be interested in bringing back. The money we receive for roads is just not enough. And I think that people have expectations that I'm paying gas tax, which, yes, if you're driving and you're pumping gas, you are paying gas taxes, but it is not nearly enough to handle the roads that we have. And it's not Lake County, it's everywhere. At one point in time, if we really want to change the PCI from the direction it's been going, or where it's at, to where it should be, we have to have a conversation about a road tax. It benefits the economy by having better roads, where people are not having to spend their money to repair their cars, but going to our restaurants, going to our retailers. It makes it so that businesses also don't lose money as much and have to increase their prices, because they're not having to fix their stuff. Our transit benefits, our sheriff benefits, we have to figure out how to get better roads, and at one point, we have to bring that conversation to the Board of Supervisors to figure out how to make that happen.
Supervisor Owen.
Okay. I, just to bring it out publicly, I have been pestering Mr. March for a while, and have actually, back during my campaigning days, and at that time, I believed that the most important issue in our district was, in District 1, was the Lower Lake School. It's a safety issue. It's the largest school in the, in the county, and it's actually dangerous, that Lake Street area. And so thank you for working on that. I know we have something on the agenda right now that we're going to be looking at, looking at some fixes on that. After going out to Morgan Valley last week, I think it was, there's a huge slide that is getting to the point that the people are worried about getting in and out, period, and that's their only way in and out. So I'm glad to hear that that's on the agenda. I also had spoke, and I was really happy that Mr. Sabatier had brought that up, about having some kind of target financially, and I had spoke to you about that. We actually went on a tour of south, kind of the Middletown area. I was starting from the Napa County line and kind of working, but I didn't get in for a very long time, but we did a few, looked at a few projects on some of the roads that really need to be done, where culverts are literally rotted out and the roads are falling. So I, I was able to take Mr. March around for that. But I had also mentioned to you, and Mr. Sabatier had mentioned it now, about getting an idea of what it would cost, what kind of money we do need to bring forward to be able to take care of that price tag. And I know that's, that's a big ask, but I just want to do it officially and ask what we'd need to raise. I had spoke with Ms. Susan, yes, today or yesterday? 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 About looking at, because I don't believe in, of course, raising taxes, but to put something on the ballot for 2026 for a road tax is something I would like to see come forward and let the people decide, and, but we need to know what, what we need to do financially to make this happen and make it a reality to fix our roads, because our roads are atrocious. Thank you. And thank you for your work.
One last thing. I know that with some permits, especially with regard to Lucerne, I know there's a couple of either, sorry, of either, I know, like, the Senior Center and then a couple of other projects that were taking place. One of the comments that was shared with me was that when they were conducting the permit, there was a checkmark or a area for, you know, the permit fees to have some sort of regard to roads. And they're like, why are we having to clear that? We don't, they don't even fix them. So I don't know if there's a correlation there, you know, wherever the case may be. I don't know if the fees are included. It's just, I'm bringing that up, because that was, that was something that was relayed to me, that, you know, the, some of the fees associated, or some of the checkmarks off had to have some sort of regard to that. So, yeah, just giving you that insight.
So there are two road-specific fees. Our refuse haulers who take our franchise, refuse haulers pays a fee, as well as if you pull a building permit and the cost of your construction value is over $10,000, there's a fee as well. So those are two fee sources. We are going to conduct another study to recalculate those fees. Last fee study was done in 2014. Typically, they're done every five years, so we're going to be looking at that. We talked to a consultant, and that's about a $30,000 study, so.
Thank you for that. There's no other comments from the board? We'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to come up, please.
I, I had one comment on what he just said. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Personally, as, if you know me, I'm not for adding any more fees or taxes to the people. Our building is down, we need to, we need to make it easier for people to build here than, rather than costing them more to be able to build. And to put out $30,000 for a study, I would rather do a, see if we can pass a tax, a sales tax, to be able to take care of those needs, if possible. I don't want to hit the builders or anybody with more fees.
All right, Sarah.
Good morning, Tom Lasik. You asked about any other road suggestions, so I'm going to put in my plug for my favorite road, which is Highland Springs Road. It is, I think it transitions between District 4 and District 5. It's on the Kelseyville area draft plan for Ascenic Drive, and it's also on the draft plan for road repairs. I'm not sure if it's considered an arterial, arterial road or a connector road. The first four, first four miles before the park, there are no speed limit signs. The first, the next two miles inside the park, which are paved, also no speed limit signs. And the next four and a half miles, which is unpaved, no speed limit signs. Maybe five years ago, that was not so much of an issue, but now we have quite a bit of commercial traffic going through the park. And it's quite beautiful, but it's also quite dangerous. I don't know what signage costs, but speed limit signs would be very important. Signs letting drivers know they're actually in the park on Highland Springs Road would be helpful. They are, they do exist on East Highland Springs Road, but on Highland Springs Road, it doesn't have anything that says, "Welcome to the park." When I talk to drivers, they don't even realize they're in the park. They're just rushing to and from their deliveries. So, and we have equestrians and hikers and bikers and dog walkers that walk on the road. And we have caution signs on the other side of the park to let drivers know that, but there's nothing of the sort on Highland Springs Road. So I don't know how much signage costs, but I would imagine it's a whole lot cheaper than chip seal. And also, the paved portion of Highland Springs Road, as it goes to the park, is not lined. There's no double yellow. It would be, even though it's not legally wide enough for a two-lane road, if there was a double yellow, it would change behavior. I've currently pulled out 14 people now, run off the road or slid off the road, and that's just me. I go through that road every day. At the intersection of East Highland Springs Road and Highland Springs Road, that's a, quite a dangerous intersection. I think it could be redesigned, just through signage and painting, to make it more safe. So anyways, it is on the Kelseyville area plan draft to make it safer. I don't know what that fits into your cycle of road repair, but that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Yes?
Good morning, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen, and Supervisors, Margot Cambara. Since Director March has invited comment on road priorities, I share the following. I suggest that we raise safety as one of our primary concerns when we prioritize road improvements, specifically that those where safety issues affect life and death. So I bring to your attention High Valley Road. And there have been several discretionary use permits that have been approved for projects that use that road, and residents have raised concerns about safety, primarily when it comes to evacuation for wildfire and also emergency response. Residents have pointed out to a history of accidents on that road and also near misses, and those involve large delivery trucks that have commercial business in that area. At one planning commission hearing for a discretionary use permit, the planning commissioners were told that the road department had, had plans to address the road safety concerns, but no timeline was given. The concern is that until those safety issues are addressed for the road, those residents are at risk, and this could be a liability issue. Exposing residents to unmitigated risk for a discretionary use permit, and this could also pose a sequo violation of cumulative traffic impacts that are not addressed. So I bring this to your attention, especially for those residents who have only one way in and one way out to, to their homes. Thank you.
I don't know, Glenn, I had sent you that information from the last town hall, and you mentioned that you're working with a consultant or something like that for, for that area, or an engineer or something of the like.
So I have my survey, our surveyor, county surveyor, going to survey the area where that airpin turn is, and then we're going to have an engineer look at the truck-moving templates, place them on the road to see if the road is properly designed for the trucks we allow, based on the signage, and then we'll figure out next steps.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisor staff, Julia Carrera, Upper Lake. Thank you for your presentation. Again, thank you for the offer of what we think we need to do. Main Street of Upper Lake, there's a section that is north that wasn't part of the redevelopment agency development, when we used to have that agency. Just this last storm, there were, was three feet of water flooding homes on Main Street. I have spent for the last two years pumping 24 hours to try to get the water to go the right direction, instead of flooding our homes on Main Street, because a resident that lives on Clover Creek graded without a permit over two acres and changed all of the drainage that used to go into Clover Creek that now comes onto Main Street. We also have a similar condition in that particular location that Supervisor Owen spoke about. We have collapsing culverts and sinking street. This is Main Street. We have huge semis going over this area. Two cars have spun out, one falling into a ditch and smashing the culvert that's supposed to take the water away. Because of all the water that's coming that used to go into the creek, it filled up one of the two culverts that are county-owned. Fortunately, there was enough attention on it that your crew came out and cleaned it out, thank you very much, and also became aware of the situation, was very concerned about the collapsing culverts and the sinkholes. So I urge you to include Main Street on Upper Lake, North End, storm drain system, as well as the pavement itself, and the sinkholes that are increasing every year. It's a scary situation, and the three feet of water going into people's homes was really kind of the last straw for us on the, on the, on that end of Main Street. So anything you can do to help, including grants, is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the chambers? Zoom? I'll close public input and bring, oh, okay, one second. Did you want to comment while she's getting them?
Thank you. I just want to quickly comment. Shortly before the presentation, we did get a public comment about High Valley Road as well, that somebody cited there had been three accidents of semi-trucks in the last seven months. Thank you.
Donna?
Donna McElwitt, in Clear Lake Oaks. Again, High Valley Road is very dangerous and needs attention, especially at East Lake School. I tried to cross the road on Highway 20, I know, which is the highway, but having even a crossing guard and a Caltrans crossing guard, the cars did not stop and it wove in between the three of us. So that's an area of concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Betsy Khan, Upper Lake. Aligned with the idea of including areas of need, even though the County Department of Water, of Public Works is not directly responsible for this, the Watershed Protection District is responsible for ensuring that all shoreline drainage areas contributing to the degradation of water quality in Clear Lake are in compliance with the state water quality orders. And the city of Clear Lake has 49 miles of unpaved, heavily traveled roads that drain directly into the lake. They have a 1998 pavement management plan, or drainage management plan, that we have heard many times as being updated, but it would be really helpful if our Department of Public Works and the Watershed Protection District folks would work together with the permities for our water quality order in the city of Clear Lake. That's a longstanding detriment to the whole lower arm of the lake. Thank you very much.
Any others? All right, I'll close public input. And lastly, I just wanted to ask one more question I didn't get to earlier. With the, with the Rodman's Loop, that work, what kind of work is it going to be? Because I know before, it was, it was like some different patch.
Because I know before it was like some different patchwork, if you will. And so I know that the concern, as this was posted last week, when some folks looked at the presentation, they wanted to know what type of work would be done on that Rodman Slough area.
We're going to reconstruct the road.
Okay.
It will be a brand-new road.
Okay, thank you.
With a 20-year lifespan.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Latie?
I just have another quick question. Sometimes I feel that we work too hard to try and solve the problems when there needs to be better participation from the community. At what point is a resident supposed to take care of the frontage of their house? So for example, when I used to live in an area where I had sidewalks, if I had weeds growing out of the culvert, I would get a letter saying, "You need to knock down the weeds." Why? Because eventually it rips up the asphalt, rips up the concrete, then water can seep in, then it starts damaging. I see all jurisdictions here behaving like they need to take care of the entirety of it when some of that is helping to create a nice frontage for specific properties. At what point do we hold accountable homeowners to take care of the frontage of their home to help us out in dealing with roads rather than allowing it to deteriorate and then making your job that much more difficult and making us having to spend more money? Is that something that we can look at to try and expand on?
So I hope to give, update our website to provide information about what streets the residents are required to maintain up to the edge of pavement, because we do not have a right-of-way there. The owners are responsible for maintaining it up to the edge of the road, and then we may address some things by ordinance.
And then, sorry, final thing. Are you planning to bring back a day ones? I think we talked about it not too long ago, but a day ones policy to, again, maintain these roads once they have been rehabilitated?
Yes. So just so you know, I have an extra help employee coming onboard this Thursday. She was a department here at the county, and I'm very excited. And she's going to be focusing on RFPs, RFQs, as well as updating policies and ordinances.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, I think we do need action to accept this, and so.
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing further, I'll make a motion to accept and file the 2025 Roads Projects and the 2026 Regional Transportation Plan slash Active Transportation Plan Update.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you, Director March, very much. Next, we'll move on to our 6.7, Consideration of Presentation of the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance's Training Facility Presentation. And Ben, I know you're presenting this, but if you'd like to come up and get started.
He's rounding the troops.
Yep. Come on up. I think you can come up and sit. There's enough seats. Any, yeah.
Pick a screen, Jordan.
Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm here with Tara, the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, regarding a training facility and workforce development program that is being funded by a community development block grant disaster relief that was awarded to Tara last year, and it's a partnership with the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. And I'm here with the Program Director, Lindsay Daly, and Tara's staff to give a presentation.
Ben, real quick, who funded that grant?
So it was...
I know it's CDBG, but it didn't come from the county, right?
Correct. HCD.
Just want to clear that up. Thank you.
Yeah, so it came from the state. It was tied back to the wildfires from 2015, and it just took a while for the, the funding was announced a few years ago, and then just kind of the process and administration of the program. You know, sometimes HCD can be rather slow, so they actually announced, announced the funding allocation in 2023 for Lake County, and then they announced the award last year.
Okay, thank you.
Also through the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, and we have Weston, and we have Weston here as well.
Okay. And that's a partnership?
Correct.
All right. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
No problem. Take that.
Thank you so much for, there you go. Thank you for having us. Is this on? Okay.
We'll start with a round of introductions, and yeah, as Ben said, I'm Lindsay Daly, Executive Director of the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance. Pass it to.
Good morning. My name is Jordan Reyes. I'm a Middletown Rancheria trial member and the field coordinator with the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance.
Hello, I'm Kim Cole, and I am the CDBG Grant Manager for Tara.
All right. I'll start us off. For those of you that don't know, the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance is an intertribal nonprofit based out of Upper Lake, California. We deal in revitalizing the local ecology to its native inhabitants. We can use that through traditional means like cultural fire or contemporary means with invasive removal with hand tool work or using prescribed fire measures. We host a treks every year where we have professional fire individuals come and help train the community as a whole in wildfire resiliency tactics like NWCG certified trainings like S212, which is wildland chainsaw, is up to the basic entry-level firefighter, too. We host a lot of trainings, and we actually integrate a lot of local knowledge into our trainings, so like plant ecology and ID, because those also go into our wildfire mitigation tactics. We work with local, state, and federal agencies and with private landowners to be able to rehabilitate the lands. We have an intertribal hand crew that we run comprised of travel members from Lake, Mendocino, and Sonoma County, and we are able to kind of use our collective hands to help heal the lands and also be able to share our cultural heritage and practices amongst one another and be able to kind of show a little bit of that to the community, that our ways of life is what showed the park-like settings when the first settlers came here into California. But that's a little bit about what we do and our program, and then we'll go into our slideshow.
Thanks, Jordan. So as Jordan mentioned, most of our work up until now has been really centered around building capacity for the tribal community to steward ancestral lands, and we're moving into kind of a new phase of the program where we're excited to be working here in Lake County to open up our training to the greater community and to share ecocultural stewardship, or stewardship that really looks at the revitalization of our local ecology and tribal cultures as like a model for stewarding our landscape. So the grant that we received, thank you to Terry Logston for passing the lead on to us, is CDBG funding, as Ben mentioned, and it came, it's kind of a long, convoluted process, but HUD awarded it to HCD, who awarded it to CDBG, who awarded it to the official grantee is the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, who we're excited to partner with, and we are a sub-recipient of the grant. So lots of partnership and collaboration involved, and the focus of the grant is really to serve low and moderate-income Lake County residents. And there's kind of two major components to this grant. The really exciting part is it is funding the acquisition of property for a training center. So we are in the final stages, we hope. Escrow should be closing very soon here. We're just waiting on those funds to hit, March 31st, hopefully. And there's a property on Highway 29, which we'll talk a little bit more about, just south of Upper Lake. And we've had the opportunity to work with the county Community Development Department, and I think I saw Maria back there, and kind of share our plans for the training center, which will, you know, be a place to showcase our stewardship work and to share it with the greater community, the tribal community, and the greater community at large. And then also an expansion of our stewardship training program.
Our ecocultural stewardship, you know, it really enhances the biodiversity that we found in our ecosystems at one time, and so being able to return back to that, not only for tribal members, but I think for all the people who call Lake County home. You know, if we're all going to live here, I think it's our inherent right to be able to steward these lands and take care of it with one another, utilizing the practices of the First Nations that were once here. It reduces the threat of catastrophic wildfire, and for us, it's not just wildfire mitigation. For us, it's our way of life, and our way of life was burning for our plants, for our medicines and our foods, and when you got that, you had wildfire resiliency as a byproduct. It wasn't our main focus, but it is a part of it. So that's one thing that we're trying to help teach with this ecocultural stewardship, is that even though we burned for different reasons, you had multiple different outcomes that supported different communities. It helps out with our water quality. Being able to burn my traditional homelands in Middletown, we did a couple cultural burns there, and I was able to lead one of them as a cultural burn lead under the new law. And when I did that, we had recently purchased the property, and the creek was supposed to be seasonal, and as far as I know, now there's water in it year-round. So it really showed that, you know, the water quality was starting to come back from these burns being reintroduced onto the landscape, and it does support that relationship between people and the land. A part of my trainings, you know, a friend of mine once said to me that sick land leads to sick people, and sick people lead to sick land, and only healing one will not heal both. We have to heal both at the same time. And being able to do that, having relationships between native and non-native on the lands, putting hard work, and being able to heal our lands together, because we all call it home, is what shows that relationship between all of us and the land, and being able to have a healthier community for everyone.
So this type of stewardship is what we hope to share at the training center, where we demonstrate all the different kinds of things that we're up to. This is a quick little overview of the map of the property. It was formerly a commercial cannabis grow operation, and there is a bunch of infrastructure there that wasn't useful to too many people, but it's very useful to us. So I don't know, for some of you who've been to our current headquarters, we're in, we're currently home-based at a small barn at Robinson Rancheria. It's been our awesome kind of founding, starting grounds, and we've been so grateful for that space and the relationship and the support from Robinson, and it's getting very cozy in there. So the property that we're purchasing has infrastructure for, and it's all existing infrastructure. We're just fixing buildings up. You know, the idea is to be, have a very light touch on the land and really work with what's there. So there's, there'll be an office space, a large shop and engine bay for our 10-person intertribal hand crew, our, all of our equipment and gear, our training supplies. There's an old barn that is going to be an awesome gathering space for hosting, hosting our trainings, and a place to really bring the community together and to share with other community groups as well who need a meeting place. One of the main kind of pieces that will be land-based is a native plant nursery. We've been working in partnership with Big Valley Band of Pomo to start up a Tule nursery with really the long-term vision of being able to provide wetland plants for the Middle Creek Restoration Project. When that gets underway, you know, there'll be millions of plants needed, and we'd like them to be locally sourced and from, you know, from this climate here. So a native plant nursery is really exciting, and it's 140 acres of different plant communities. There's a creek that flows through that's an important hitch-bearing stream where we'll be able to demonstrate, you know, riparian restoration and using, you know, culturally significant basketry plants and food and medicine plants, and then oak woodlands and grasslands, and be able to really walk people around and see a living classroom of what it looks like to be ongoingly tending these different ecological communities with indigenous stewardship practices. And so, you know, the zoning is agricultural, and it's very well-aligned with our work with the native plant nursery and also demonstrating indigenous agriculture. How have people, you know, you mentioned the 700 generations or more of tribal people that have stewarded this place, and, you know, how have people sustained themselves from this land with incredible abundance for many millennia? So we, again, hope to demonstrate and share that with the community at large.
And for our trainings, we look to train around 100 Lake County residents with two cohorts of the ecocultural stewardship in four weeks of training, and we'll have two on-the-job training cohorts. And on-the-job training allows the cohorts to come on with us to be able to experience project work that we're dealing with, whether it's cultural fire, prescribed fire, or simply invasive removal, or riparian restoration. We do a lot of different, but we'll be able to bring them out and get on-job training with us, so that way they can utilize these skills that we've been training in the classroom setting. And like I mentioned earlier, we'll also be doing the NWCG courses. That's the National Wildfire Coordinating Group, and we do get them their firefighter, too, their S212s, and what other opportunities do arise that they would like to attend to, we will offer that to them and be able to broaden their skill sets to be able to work on these lands. So those are some of them, and what's really nice about those is even when they get those trainings and those certificates, they aren't just good for here. I know people that have taken them to CAL FIRE or to Forest Service, and they are, use other places as well, so it's a good starting point for people to start their personal or professional development.
Yeah, one of our hopes with this program, I saw Chief Sepeda just headed out before we presented, but we really are excited to connect more deeply with, you know, all the potential employers. There's so much work needed in the realm of wildfire resilience, and, you know, yeah, there's just a lot of need and a need for training and trained individuals to, you know, to enter work opportunities with local tribes, with our local fire departments, CAL FIRE, Forest Service, the county, you know. Having, something that's really interesting in our work when we're out doing beneficial burning in collaboration with our agency partners is a lot of our agency partners are like, "Well, we know wildfire. We know how to stop fires, but we don't necessarily have sort of the complementary skill set around, well, how do you use fire as a healing tool? You know, how do you know how different plants will respond? How intensely they burn? What are the right conditions for burning?" And so in order to really, you know, build up that capacity to put good fire on the ground, this program kind of offers that complementary skill set. So you don't learn just how to stop fires, you also learn how to light good fires, and we're really hoping that we can train up more folks that can, you know, work locally and build that local capacity. So excited to connect more with our different partners, to, you know, hire young folks so they know there are opportunities here locally to get involved with well-paid careers, with, you know, nice career pathways, and you can get trained here in the county, and you can go on for jobs here in the county that really benefit your community.
All right. So some of our training programs are stewardship, which involves all of the restoration work that we'd be doing, whether it's for the lands, the water, everything like that. Our number-one priority with everything that we do is safety, whether it's community safety, safety of our crew, safety of just, it's paramount for us, because one of the most dangerous things we do is fire or run saw, and safety is our main objective, but also the safety of our community members that we're a part of. Wildland fire, like Lindsay was saying, we get to train with wildland firefighters because we have to see both sides of that, be able to give beneficial fire, put to know how to react if in the event there is a wildfire, or maybe being able to help agencies so that way we can help our communities in the event of a wildfire. Soft skills, so even beyond just... Soft skills, so even beyond just vocational skills, we're teaching soft skills like resume building, professional development, allowing them to do public speaking to help them with their range of teaching if they want to pursue areas like that. Supportive services, we're offering a lot for, when people come out, we'll offer... Can you help me with that?
Yeah, actually, glad we have a One B person here. Supportive services, we'll be working with Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. So that will be providing support with things like transportation, childcare, equip, you know, gear so that folks can show up work-ready and especially, you know, community members that, you know, need that extra help to be able to show up. We'll have that support through our partnership with One B.
Oh, and job pipeline. So as we were saying about the NWCG shirts, those can help qualify them. Or maybe they want to get into something like Arboris and they're using our S212 to help them start with their skill set with the chainsaw. I'm using the job pipeline on it, too, given that it's so difficult for us to burn on tribal trust lands. The only avenue for me to do right now is to try to build up to be a RXB2 or a burn boss so that way I can bring beneficial fire onto tribal trust lands because that's the biggest hurdle that we have. So starting out now, being able to work it and build up my experience to hopefully one day bring good fire back to the tribes of Lake County.
I think that is getting to the end of the presentation. We wanted to put just these words out to the community, to the board of supervisors and the community in general, that we, you know, our programs have historically been really serving primarily the tribal community, although some of our fire trainings have been open to the whole community. And we're, we're kind of moving into new territory where we would like to connect more with local schools, with, you know, who, who in the county is doing work that's really connecting youth with opportunities for careers and livelihoods here in Lake County? You know, what are the best places that we can reach folks and potential partnerships? So any ideas, we would certainly welcome if any of you all know in your districts, you know, who we should be talking to, you all know better than, than anyone. And, yeah, and when we, hopefully, Spirit willing, very soon, are in our new spot, we'll invite you all out for a celebration as well. I think that is the end of our presentation.
Well, it has been an absolute pleasure watching you grow and supporting in all the ways that we possibly can. Being out on your burns is a really powerful experience. I've been able to see quite a few of them. And the, the inter-agency collaboration is phenomenal. It's so wonderful when we see Cal Fire folks and local fire agency folks out, all working together. It's really beautiful. I love the collaboration with the Cockberry Water Company to restore the watershed. There's been several burns out there. It's made a really big difference in improving the health of the land, which is, which is the whole point of all of this, which is, it's awesome. I, I hope everyone can go out and see one of the burns. The capacity building over the years has been really important to, to our community for job growth, for workforce development, because we have such a great need to do all of this work. And we have quite a large land area in our county. How many, how many employees do you currently have? And how do you see that growing over the next couple of years?
That's a great question. So we were founded in 2019 as an all-volunteer organization. And today, I think we have 22 people, full-time staff members, mostly Lake County residents. I think our crew kind of expands and contracts with different training programs. So this on-the-job training cohort that we'll be bringing on through this grant will, you know, our crew will go up to around 20 people, and then it'll shrink back down to our permanent staff. I think we've been growing so much that we're really looking to get to a long-term home, stabilize our programs, and do some strategic planning to, you know, think about the best way to continue to serve the community. So, you know, we're, we're in a good spot right now, and we're kind of catching up to ourselves a little bit. Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a lot of work to be done. We, I know we supported the MOU that you have with BLM for the Black Forest work. Unfortunately, with all the funding freezes, that work is on hold.
It started again.
When? I just talked to Joseph yesterday.
We received, it's been touch and go, as many of you might imagine. Stop, start, stop, start with many of our contracts, which has been a wild ride. But we received a rescindment of the stop-work order last week. And so we're not at the Black Forest right now because we're finishing up a project with Scotts Valley Band of Pomo, but we are authorized to continue working on that grant again. And we have, you know, right now, we have five years of funding with BLM for project work in the county. And we're, we're meeting with BLM, I think, next week to look at some projects up on Cow Mountain as well. So we are supposedly good to go from now on.
Well, I had heard about this stop-work order. You told me about that yesterday. Fingers crossed, because I know there's a lot of changes day by day. But this work is critical, not just for the health of the forest, but also the protection of our communities. So I'm so grateful that we've got these MOUs in place, and it sounds like they're expanding. I know the one in the Black Forest, it sounds like it's expanding significantly because we know the BLM workforce struggles to keep up with their land. So the more that we have these partnerships with local agencies like yourself to do that work, it's, you know, it goes a long way to reaching the goals that we have for our community. So I'm, I'm excited. So let me know how that works out. Yeah, because I know it's been a touch and go for a while. And then I know that we have Weston here, if we want to invite him up to speak on the Workforce Alliance part of this.
Can I let Chair go first?
Yeah.
And then you can come up, sir, after that.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I appreciate you bringing up the question about reaching students. I believe you folks were at the Menisceneo College last week for the event. I think it was with 11th graders or high school students? Is that right?
I'm not too sure. I wasn't there, but someone might have been.
Okay, maybe I saw that wrong. But anyway, I know the, the high school in my district, they are, they should be doing an event later this spring where they have organizations come in to, or they have a day where the students can interact with them. So I think that would be a good spot to do some more outreach with the high school students. And I can help you get connected with, with those folks. And, and I would appreciate an opportunity to go out on one of the burns and see what's going on. So if we can get in touch about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Definitely.
All right, and then, did you have?
Yeah.
I see it now.
I'm not quite sure where I'm supposed to put it.
I could see it right there, when you put it behind our computer.
Appreciate all the work that you do. Obviously, we've had too many experiences of fires, too many experiences of kind of letting things go. And, and that's not the right way to have a healthy environment and to be protected from the unfortunate wildfires that we've experienced too often. I, I know I'm, we are starting to try and initiate some Fire Safe Council, Fire Wise Communities. I think that once those have been established, we'd love to invite you to learn how we can, how those groups can work with you within those environments that they've dedicated to protecting and working on, to simplify the processes of accessing those properties. Anything related to our community colleges, our schools, our fire districts, happy to connect you with whoever it is that you have not yet connected to. This reminds me a lot of the NCO Build program. We need housing. We have NCO Build who's trying to rehabilitate housing and also doing workforce development. We need fire protection, and you're doing the workforce development and at the same time trying to do work to protect our environment. And so appreciate what you're doing and looking forward to how it continues to grow. And you had an amazing presence at the Science Symposium. I saw Tara folks all over the place with their uniforms on. So I, 22, I was like, "Yeah, that sounds about right." Because everywhere I looked, there seemed to be an orange hat. Appreciate seeing you here and appreciate the presentation and great work. Let's keep it up.
Yes, thank you. And I would actually like to take you up on a, on going out on a burn as well.
Fantastic. Yeah, we're hoping, hope to have some more burns this spring. And we didn't present on, you know, we have a whole number of grants and partnerships. And one of the really awesome things about getting to come work on our crew as a training program is that you get to go work with BLM, you get to go work with Cal Fire, you get to go work with the Forest Service, you get to work with the local tribes. And that, you know, relationship building and exposure to career opportunities is such a cool thing. And hopefully, if another of our federal grants gets back in line, we'll have five years of funding for our fire program with the Community Welfare Defense Grant. That's looking strategically at high-priority areas within the CWPP that are high priority for tribes and for the community to build in beneficial burning county-wide. And so for any Lake County residents that might be listening to this, you know, please email us at goodfire@tribalecorrestoration.org if you have lands that you would like to burn because we have grant funding to work with you to prepare units, prepare lands to bring good fire back for that community protection and, and resilience. So lots of opportunities to get involved.
Thank you.
And then you said, Weston?
Weston. Good morning, Weston Seifert. I currently sit on the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. And, you know, it's very, very rarely do you have a convergence of amazing things at one point, right? Like we, to be able to be a part of and partner with an organization that is just bringing good to the community, it's, it's just fantastic. So I'm, I'm super honored, I'm really proud that the, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay has been able to facilitate this program for Lake County. So it's awesome and look forward to watching your growth and how you guys continue to just be a, a presence for good in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Weston.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. I didn't know if you, did you? Come on up.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Crandall and supervisors. Congratulations for reaching this milestone. Your programs sound very exciting. And I'm glad you're doing outreach. And I was wondering if you're doing outreach also to landowners in terms of increasing the canvas of potential cultural and, and beneficial burns? And if you're doing that as a landowner who doesn't know too much about your program, could you please address liability and how liability is addressed? Especially if, heaven forbid, one of the controlled burns gets uncontrolled? Thank you.
Yeah, I can speak to that real briefly. That's like an eight-hour conversation. It's been one of the biggest barriers in the state of California. We are in a very litigious state, and it's been a big barrier for putting good fire on the ground. Luckily, we have some really amazing folks that have been working on policy changes to shift that. So, you know, the first thing is we mitigate risk by doing a whole bunch of different things to make that fire as safe as possible from the get-go. We prepare the unit, make sure we have good containment lines, that we have personnel that's trained and, and ready to respond. We partner with agencies, so you get a nice shiny fire truck usually sitting at that burn in case things get out of control. So there, most of the work is really in risk mitigation upfront. And there is always the chance that something can go not as planned when you're working with Mother Nature and an element like fire. And there's a couple of different pieces that we have at play. One is the state now provides a liability claims fund. So all of our burns are burnt, we have a burn plan that's written by a state-qualified burn boss. And then it's technically reviewed by a state-qualified burn boss with a whole bunch of measures in there for, you know, how many people do you need if something goes wrong? Da-da-da-da-da. So there's that plan set in place. And then we submit our plan to the state-sponsored claims fund so that protects against third-party losses. So if, you know, fire jumps your property line and burns your neighbor's fence down, the state will actually cover up to $2 million in losses, which is huge, hugely helpful. We also recently finally found an insurance carrier who will cover our fire activities. Previously, those were excluded from our general liability policy, and now we have insurance. Obviously, we don't want to get to the point of needing to use that, but it's there if it's really needed. So we've come a long way. And really, prescribed fire, it has a perception of being very risky. It's actually a very low-risk, high-consequence. In other words, the risk of something going wrong, you know, statistically is incredibly low. But if something goes wrong, the consequences can be very high. And so just working with the public perception of that is really important. It's, if it's done under the right conditions, with the right people and the right plan, it's actually incredibly low-risk activity. So those are some of the thoughts. But yeah, feel free to come chat with us. And we will be doing more community events when our Community Welfare Defense Grant kicks in and look forward to working more with the community.
All right, anyone else from the public? Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the, to the board. Thank you for the presentation. I know in, in your language, it's probably different, but ours is a godi ho, good fire. Sorry about that, I put you on the spot.
I can't think of the second word.
You'll think of it. All right, well, anything else from the board or any other final comments?
Well, I, I just have to brag on you a little bit because when we go out of county at big meetings, like the Wildfire Task Force, these folks present there, and they're really setting the standard across the state for this type of collaboration. So you guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for the presentation, and we'll move on. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, 6.8 public hearing, consideration of proposed resolution to adopt amendment to the health and safety element of the Lake County General Plan. And...
How's it going, Kim?
We've got Maria Turner and...
Good morning.
Hi. Still morning.
Excellent. This item is a public hearing to adopt a general plan amendment to the text of the general plan to update reference to the latest version of the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. There is state law, AB 2140, that requires this update to the general plan after every update of the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. To not do so in a timely manner would, could compromise our ability to qualify for assistance in the future in some, some different grants. When the board adopted the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan in that resolution, there was a reference to making this change to the safety element of the general plan. However, according to state law, an update to the general plan requires a noticed public hearing. And so that's why we're doing it now. Instead of just a reference in that past resolution, it's now abundantly clear to the state that we are coming into compliance with AB 2140 through this proposed resolution.
Questions? Anyone from the public? All right, anyone on Zoom? Hearing done, we'll bring it back to the board for, I think it's action.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay, all right, Supervisor Owen.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabate.
Aye.
Supervisor Rosmussen.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska and Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. All right, resolution has passed 5:00. Thank you very much. We will move on to our next item on the agenda. And that is the presentation of Lake County 2050 updates.
Thank you.
Director Turner?
Maria Turner, Community Development Director. I also have the Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith, who will be doing our tech. During your last break, we did pull up the GIS web... During your last break, we did pull up the GIS web map viewer that, let me start at the beginning. The purpose of today's hearing is to update the Board of Supervisors on recommendations from the Local Area Plan Advisory Committee that are specific to land use or mapping changes. The land use or mapping changes are most significantly impactful on the environmental review that we're conducting this year. And so we wanted to bring those to you today to see if there is any board direction, specifically any strong opposition to any of the recommendations that were approved by the Local Area Plan Advisory Committees or our LEAPACs. These also, these recommendations also went in front of the General Plan Advisory Committee in two meetings. And one of the recommendations from the General Plan Advisory Committee was support of all LEAPAC-approved recommendations. We are getting the web map viewer updated or up on the screen for you, and Shannon will go through these. We're going to start with land use designation amendments. There were a few in each of the eight planning areas. After that, we will go on to a PDF or a PowerPoint slides that were shown to the General Plan Advisory Committee regarding any recommended changes to community growth boundaries and planning area boundaries. While Shannon's zooming in, this is part of our Lake County 2050 project to update the general plan, which is most of our countywide elements or chapters, as well as an update to all local area plans. We have eight planning areas in the county. And the meetings of the LEAPACs took place in October, November. They were held virtually as well as in-person. The in-person meetings were in the Board of Supervisors chambers as well as different locations within the planning areas. While she's zooming in, we're going to start with the Cobb Mountain area.
Mine's not loading.
Land use designation amendments in the Cobb area included areas, let's see, let's start with Hoburg's Resort. The former Hoburg's Resort that really killed us all, that we lost it in the Valley Fire, has remained undeveloped. And the LEAPAC recommended that area specifically for future housing. Okaduki, good. Yeah, you'll see them as those kind of downward pointing, Isosceles triangles area. That's Hoburg's. To the left, see that one that's in blue? That is currently, that is currently a community pool. And that community would love to enlarge the amenities that they're offering there, including a future cafe or cafeteria, restaurant, possible, like retail, you know, like your swim rings, things like that. And so there, the LEAPAC approved a partial, like creating a split zone there to allow for that type of retail and food service within that community pool area. At the very top, you see like a little kind of triangle. That is currently local commercial, and the LEAPAC recommendation was to move it to community commercial to allow for additional, more appropriate, or they would think more welcoming commercial uses. So instead of a surveyor's office, engineer's office, it would now offer maybe a community restaurant or something like that.
This is existing.
Actually, I think they're okay. I don't think I have to walk them through it. I can do it just based off of this Excel spreadsheet. But if you do have specific questions and you want us to zoom in, let us know. Oh, okay. And then if you go down into the south, let's go down in the Sigler Springs. Should be, where are they? Oh, up, up and to the right. Yeah, sorry. My sense of direction, you know, not that great. Anyway, you'll see a number of those five different parcels there that the Sigler Springs Community Revitalization Association recommended a change for those parcels to allow for a hamlet-style mixed-use neighborhood. Across the county, through all of the different surveys that we sent out to the public and got back, the public really supports the idea of mixed use all around. So that mixed use would be an allowance of residential as well as commercial co-located onto a single parcel that's zoned commercial. Now, what you see right there is the Sigler Springs idea of their revitalization of their neighborhood that was also destroyed in Valley Fire. They'd like to build back, not just as a subdivision of homes, but rather a more holistic walkable neighborhood for all of those, see those beige parcels? Those are residential. But the ones in the middle, then, would have the option for mixed use. So like a local commercial, something that could offer that community more of a walkable neighborhood. And that's it for Cobb Mountain. Do we have any questions before we go on to Kelseyville?
No, but I like that.
Isn't it cool? Yeah, we're really excited about that idea. And the public was excited about mixed use because we're not thinking like we want to turn into the Bay Area with a gazillion apartments over all this retail or like a mall. We're thinking more like a residence above or behind a pizza place or a coffee place or different things like that because we want to retain the rural character. That's a top priority across, around the whole county. But we also like the idea of getting housing closer towards commercial so that people aren't always driving all over the place. Into Kelseyville. Let's zoom in and go towards the western, northwestern quadrant, please. You'll see a number of magenta, oh, sorry, eastern. Should have rehearsed this one, huh? Okay, so on the eastern, you see that number of magenta-lined parcels. This is where the LEAPAC decided they'd like to focus higher-density residential housing. And the reason is, you'll see that blue rectangle below it, that's all of our schools in Kelseyville. So they'd like to position higher-density residential right where the kids can easily walk to schools because the safe routes to schools is one of the ongoing goals and priorities in Kelseyville so that our kids are not walking, you know, along a lot of morning traffic congestion and parents trying to get their kids to school. Let's just place the housing there so they can just walk across the street. There's one other towards the, now the real western side. You'll see that, that one, yeah, zoom in just a little bit on, it's kind of like a curvy-looking rectangle right down there. Currently agriculture, it's an eight-acre parcel. The Kelseyville LEAPAC recommended this to be switched over to medium-density residential, again, for its proximity to the highway and main roads. Housing was actually a pretty big topic of discussion in Kelseyville because they are getting multifamily residential going on right now. And so they're recognizing that they wanted to be very deliberate in where they placed housing for this next 20-year period. Any questions on that? That's the end of Kelseyville's recommendations. Moving on to Lakeport. You're going to recognize Lakeport's shape of land use designation changes. Doing good, Shannon. Thank you. Okay. Many of you will recognize that magenta collection of multiple parcels as the old Crystalago project. This was big about, what, 10, 14 years ago? It was originally going to be a golf-centered community, then a wine-centered community. Nothing's ever happened. And the Lakeport LEAPAC would like this to go back, instead of being planned development residential and planned development commercial, they'd like it to go back to its original land use designation of rural lands. It's sloped, it's remote, it has no infrastructure, and so that's what it was before that project. Then secondly, there was a request from a property owner, yep, zoned it, nope, it's down, it's to the right, it's to the east of Crystalago. I could see it, it's a teeny tiny little square. Yeah. That's over in the Walnut Drive. And it is a portion of a parcel that continues to the west. However, the area that continues to the west, yeah, where Shannon's showing the little arrow thingy, that has a high slope going up to the highway. The area that is within that little square is not as sloped. And the LEAPAC approved a request to change just that flatter portion to medium-density residential, which would match the adjacent parcel for the purpose of future housing going in there. Any questions on Lakeport?
Just a brief question. The area of Lakeport, is that within the potential city annexation?
No. The city annexation goes down to the south Main Street area. So you'll see that grayed-out area in the city.
Yeah.
And the part to the southeast part of the city is...
Oh, we were way north of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
The Lakeport planning area kind of curls around the city of Lakeport. To the north with North Lakeport, which is where we have a lot of housing, to the west going into Bendmore towards the end of the county, and then curls around the city of Lakeport to the south as well.
Thank you.
It was also, just in case, that's not part of today's discussion, but the LEAPAC also does support the annexation of South Main Street. But we'll get to that at a later meeting. Going into Lower Lake, please. Yes. Lower Lake, there are a number of parcels along Morgan Valley Road. They already have municipal water and sewer. And the LEAPAC approved a request from a member of the public to change those to, from rural residential to suburban reserve. Rural residential allows for five to 10 minimum acres per parcel. Suburban reserve would allow for future subdivisions for housing purposes to minimum acre size of one to three acres. That does it for Lower Lake. Any questions on that one? We're going to move on to Middletown, please. Not calling Evanna, but it's taking a lot of restraint. All right, Middletown. These are a little harder to pick out. Very good. All right. So let's start in the northern part. There are a few parcels here, a couple parcels here that are currently split, or either zoned or split-zoned, local commercial. The LEAPAC approved the property owner's request to move that up to community commercial for allow for a wider variety of commercial development opportunities. To the south, you'll see, yeah, those parcels. Those are currently, I think that looks like rural residential and rural lands. The property owner presented a request to change that to something that would support commercial development. And there was a robust dialogue in the Middletown LEAPAC, and they finally settled on resort commercial options. So the LEAPAC recommendation is to rezone, or no, sorry, change the land use designation from rural residential rural lands to resort commercial. Anybody have questions on Middletown?
Where's that located?
That is, where is that located? It is on, wait, wait. Yes, there you go. Yeah. Just when you hit Butts Canyon, there's that ridge line right there. So they'd have to kind of go around that ridge line, and then behind that would be the flatter area.
Kind of by, is Black Oak or Black Oak at stake in that area?
Before you hit Black Oak. That's further down the road. This is like right off the road.
Behind the cemetery.
Yep, yep. Very good. Thank you. Moving forward, unless we have any further questions, we'll go to the RIV. Going to the Riviera's area plan. Okay. Let's start at the top and go counterclockwise. Riviera, the Riviera's LEAPAC highly, highly, highly prioritizes finding areas for a public park. That is what is behind the recommendation between these three parcels. It'd be changing from their current land use designation to open space for future park use. To the southwest, other west. Yeah. Okay, well, we'll do this one anyway. Okay, no, we'll go do these. That one would be for, it is currently, I think, suburban reserve, and it would go towards residential for increased housing development there. Yeah, low-density residential, consistent with the entire Riviera subdivisions. And then over there, yep, same thing. Currently suburban reserve would go to low-density residential. That is it for the Riviera's. While Shannon moves over to the Lucerne area, we have a lot. So Lucerne is currently in the Shoreline Communities area plan, but there were a large number of parcels that are smaller. They're small and they're either zoned, let's see, let's go north. Well, we can start there. Okay. Now, you'll notice this part, yeah, no, go back to that.
That first street.
Yeah, right along 13th Street. Okay. This was in the 2008 general plan. This was an area of special study, kind of centering around the Lucerne Castle, which is that red area towards that side. And then going down towards the lake with two rows of parcels on either side of 13th Street changed to community commercial. Since 2008, we have had commercial development along 13th Street, but both of the other rows of parcels on the periphery on either side have remained residential. There's a problem, it's a challenge when you're in a residential used parcel and it got switched to community commercial because you become legal nonconforming and you cannot expand your residential use. That means no garages, no any residential expansion of use. Now, since those, both of those roads have stayed residential, the LEAPAC recommended that we just take those back to residential, but keep the commercial core along 13th Street. That is the purpose of those. Let's go zoom out and go elsewhere.
And so where there's spots that are still residents on there...
Yeah, they're all still just residents.
And then on the other side where it's commercial, if there is a residence there, once it's, once someone moves out or something, then it becomes commercial? Is that how I heard it before?
Well, we do have an article that sort of governs legal nonconforming uses. Once that legal nonconforming use expires, which is usually after two years of non-use, then it does revert back to community commercial.
That's right, yeah.
Yes. Those changed to be consistent with their current use. I think they're medium-density residential and they changed to industrial, just to mirror, again, there was a little bit of cleanup going on with these recommendations to revert back to what has been the consistent use the entire last 20 years. All right, where else?
More shoreline.
More shoreline.
There were neat, there's neat, and...
Yep, let's go down to Clear Lake Oaks. There is, oh, that's a community growth boundary. Keep going south. Yep, there you go, into the Keys and around that area. So there is a parcel on the Plaza that has been identified as a great spot for a future hub, a community resilience center. And so they did recommend a land use designation from community commercial to public facilities, which would kind of pave the way for that one. It's at the Plaza. And then you'll see, zoom in, I want to, specifically right along the Keys, there's a whole string of those little bitty parcels in pink right there. Those are teeny, teeny, tiny parcels. Some of them are zoned for medium or high-density residential. And it's going to be very hard to build an apartment on that tiny little parcel right there. So the request is, let's just revert that back to low-density residential because that's a more appropriate use for parcels of that size. And then if you go towards the east, I don't know why I'm pointing, you can't see me, but there. So there was a lot of discussion in the Shoreline Communities LEAPAC regarding preserving wetlands. And I don't know if you've been out near that area in the Clear Lake Keys right now, but it is a, it is a rookery gone crazy. There are cormorants and egrets and herons and everybody's nesting and the babies are yelling and it's just an amazing spot. So currently zoned for, I think, commercial.
It looks commercial.
Yeah. The LEAPAC would really like to see all of that preserved for resource conservation so the birds aren't disturbed. so the birds aren't disturbed while they're doing their spring thing. Then if you go across the highway to the north, you'll see those ag parcels. The recommendation is to change them from what they currently are, which is service commercial, but all that exists there right now are some really nice vineyards. So the Laypack would like to see that reflect what its current use is and go towards agriculture. Additionally, one that you don't see reflected here, but is a correction of a loss that we have had, is to get all of our creeks and streams and riparian areas, again, identified as resource conservation. That was lost in the last mapping update, so that's a correction that we'd like to do with this one. I don't know, let's go look at those. Okay. Okay, currently medium-density residential and service commercial. To, what do we want them to be? Ah, well, let's stop changing. It's medium-density residential. And rural residential. Okay, to reflect current uses. And then lastly, zoom over to Scotts Valley. Scotts Valley is, oh, yeah, sorry.
John, the area where John T. Klaus is supposed to be, is there going to need, is there going to be a need to rezone that? For, considering it's going to be a park or anything like that?
Not necessarily. That is a county-led project, and the county is exempt from zoning ordinance.
Just making sure that's said.
But that's a really good question. I'll store that one away.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we may do that as a cleanup, just so it's consistent. That one, yep. So Scotts Valley, portions of it are currently still in the Upper Lake Nice planning area. That is, the one that Shannon's highlighting right now is Kelly's Camp. It has, it has a long history of KOA and then a camp that run, run by, I think, Bob Kelly, who passed away. The Kelly's Camp closed down a number of years ago. And it's unable to be sold as a camp because of its floodplain areas. There's difficulty rebuilding in that area. So the Upper Lake Nice Laypack recommends that that get moved back to rural lands, revert back to its original land use designation. That concludes land use designation changes. Any questions?
Did they talk about Blue Lakes possibly in some areas, making it public? Or, because the public uses along Highway 20 and whatnot, and I don't know if they discussed that at all, or no?
They did not discuss Blue Lakes.
We've had that conversation before with the folks at Blue Lakes about having a park there or something.
Something like that, yeah.
Well, you know what, though? We did have, I remember code enforcement talking about pergolas that were built on R1. This would be actually an ideal time to do that. So when I watch this video again, I'm going to write that down for future reference because that would be a nice way to solve that problem so that that community could then have their pergolas with no zoning conflict. Because they do use those parcels as sort of community gathering areas and launch points. Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't remember that myself. We'll get that on the list.
Didn't want to remember that.
The colleagues remind me of that.
Yeah, no, that's great. That's exactly the kind of board direction that I'm looking for right now. Okay, then let's switch over.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Shannon's going to switch over to the Community Growth Boundary and Planning Area Boundary Recommendations, so.
Oh, good. No, I did want to see, I have a Community Growth Boundary question, but I just wanted to ask this question for public awareness. So these zone changes are coming a lot of times at the request of the property owner, but not always. So I, you know, for example, the Holberg's property, was any input taken or received from the property owner of changing the zoning?
Great question. We are going to have an open-house style meeting in the future and invite all of the property owners for any of these affected properties.
Are they going to be notified?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
We're reaching out to them through a mailer, saying, "Your property's been identified for a land use designation change." And hopefully that will avoid another 20 years of people calling Planning and saying, "Hey, y'all changed my zoning and didn't tell me about it." So we are doing that differently this time.
Perfect.
If you click on the presentation link, that'll take us to those slides. Are there any other questions on land use designation changes?
I do, but I'm going to wait till the full presentation is over.
Okay.
Just in case it's spoken of during that time.
While Shannon's getting that up and running, I'm going to see if there's anything I missed from my notes. So the Laypack recommendations were presented to the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, in two different meetings in February. We also gave them an update on the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, but that's not part of my presentation today because we're working on that draft document, which will be presented to the board. I think it'll be available to the public probably late spring. Nope, skip them right over. Excellent. Community growth boundaries. We had two Laypack recommendations for community growth boundary amendments. Next slide, please. In Kelseyville, if you take a look up at that north part where you see the green outline, the magenta is the current community growth boundary. To the west, the green part was a request from, no, west, the other west, yeah. A request from the property owner to include that in the community growth boundary because it was rezoned to industrial within the last, I don't know, 10 years?
I think it was three.
Three years, was it? I don't know. It was already done.
It started over 10 years ago.
Yeah, right. And so just including that into the community growth boundary, which that means, to amend your community growth boundary tells us, tells the county jurisdiction, that this is where the community would like to see extensions of municipal infrastructure in the future. That's water and sewer for the purposes of increased housing development or commercial development or supporting industrial. Then over towards the east, that little corner right there, that already has municipal services, and we couldn't figure out why it wasn't in the 2008 Community Growth Boundary Adjustment. So we saw that as a correction. That is it for Kelseyville. Any questions before we go to Lower Lake? All right, next slide, please. Lower Lake. Again, the same parcels that were recommended to go from rural residential to suburban reserve already have municipal water and sewer. And so the Laypack supported bringing those into the community growth boundary as well. That's it for Community Growth Boundary Recommendations.
Where's that located?
That's along Morgan Valley Road.
Okay. So I'm guessing there's no community growth boundaries for Cobb because of no sewer?
Correct. Community growth boundaries is where you'll focus your municipal services and for the purpose of higher-density housing and higher-impact commercial and industrial.
So, thank you for that, and I have a couple of comments and questions. You mentioned a property going from ag to something else. Is there a process where that's going to go before LAFCO for, or does LAFCO do kind of like a RFR, whatever that is, a request for response on any changes? Because LAFCO's goal and purpose is to protect open land and agricultural land from becoming urban sprawl. So what's the process for that, and where does LAFCO fit into what you are planning to do when things are coming out of the ag zone and into something else?
We will notify LAFCO as we move forward as part of the review process. However, should any housing development take place, and there is any sort of sphere of influence, like an annexation for a water district, that also goes straightly before LAFCO and is evaluated at that time.
True. So the community growth boundaries, I'm glad that was brought up because I- Can you describe what the purpose of a community growth, unless that's exactly what you just stated? It's because we have communities, we have services, but for some reason, some of those communities don't seem to meet community growth boundaries. And I see community growth boundaries being utilized, for example, like cannabis, to protect from activities, certain activities happening within community growth boundaries. I know you and I had a conversation yesterday. How do we apply certain protections to communities where obviously there is residential areas that have, that have been historically there, but aren't provided similar protections that are being provided through the use of the community growth boundaries? Is there any other zoning or overlay or anything that can be accomplished to ensure that those communities are treated the same as other communities other than they may not have sewer, or they may not have other things? Because those are true communities, in my opinion. They just don't have access to all of the services in the same way.
Certainly. Currently in Article 27, there are limitations to which zoning districts are appropriate for what, for different types of cannabis-related businesses. Specific to cultivation, some of their location limitations are, do include buffer zones from community growth boundaries. They're also not allowed in any residential district like R1, R2, R3. So that keeps them out of the neighborhoods that you would typically find in community growth boundaries as well. We do not currently have an overlay that would prohibit cannabis activities. Should the board decide that's something they would like to consider, I am happy to have that discussion when we are working on the draft ordinance to update cannabis regulations.
Okay. Then also, I guess I'll just be blunt, there's very subtle changes that are happening or that are being proposed. We're spending a lot of money to review our general plan. Last one updated was 2008. I'm going to make an assumption that we didn't necessarily scrap the previous general plan or zoning ordinance and start from scratch, and we probably made subtle changes as well. But we're dealing with a very different landscape today than we did before. We probably say it all the time, but for us, that change was 2015, where we recognized the impacts of climate change. And I'm not seeing that being implemented in how we are changing our zones to better protect especially our community growth boundaries, which is why I started with the idea of community growth boundaries in order to protect where people live. I don't want to break the entire thing and start from scratch, but seeing open spaces, rural land, and rural residential and places that worry me about how it interacts with other things, specifically community growth boundaries, how do we incentivize growth in a way that can protect community growth boundaries? Such as, and granted, we can't force people to do it, but maybe there's ways to incentivize it, having agriculture with buffers surrounding community growth boundaries, to have green belts around our areas. Because I'm not going to say that it's 100%, but typically house fires can be contained to a smaller footprint while it's the wooie that really impacts us in a very negative way. How can we look at this general plan update to really implement strategies based on our experiences with climate change and how to best protect? Because I'm seeing little tiny changes, but I'm not seeing what I was hoping to see and what I would like to see in order to change our probably 50-year practice of how we approach land use, which has not necessarily changed all that much, when we know we keep hitting the same issues again and again and again. So I don't know what the answer is, but I just wanted to put it out there that I would love to better understand what can be done. I don't want everybody to become non-conforming. That's definitely the worst thing that can happen. But at the same time, I don't feel what I'm seeing is necessarily, because we just had that presentation from Tara. That's part of the solution of protecting our communities, is that type of work. But at the same time, zoning is important to also try to incentivize the right type of communities to create more protections. And another example of this is our paper parcels. Our paper parcels are still pipe-dreaming that there will be a residential subdivision built out in the future. This is a 1920 problem that we have yet to deal with and solve. And I would like to see what new zoning can be placed on there so we can eventually get something better, rather than suddenly tomorrow, somebody coming to you and saying, "Hey, I want to drop a couple hundred thousand dollars, get some water out there, get some sewer out there, and I want to build a house in the most dangerous of areas that you can build it when it comes to fire protection or things like that." So I would love to, I'm looking for more change than what's being proposed based on the comments that I just provided.
If I may respond?
Yes, please.
Just hold on to your hat, because it's coming. What you're getting today is recognition of recommendations from the local area plans. These are community groups who have come together, and the purpose of the recommendations here are sort of our lessons learned over the last 20 years since the last general plan update, while looking at the future. Simultaneously, what's not before you today is our Climate Adaptation Plan, which is in process as well, and the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, which does focus on future development options that would be more appropriate, given today's climate. The green belt development that you mentioned with ag surrounding our residential developments is one of our newer innovations that we've learned since watching the fires of 2015, how they'll come up to the edge of a vineyard and stop, or an orchard and stop. And so that is included in some of those lessons learned that you will see as we're going forward. So the fact that you're already aware of that and in tune, I find super exciting because that's where we are right now. You will not see those sort of radical changes coming necessarily from the local area plan advisory committees at this point. However, you will see more of those innovations in the documents as they are coming, particularly our safety element, our circulation element, our housing element, well, later, the Housing Action and Implementation Plan. All of those are going to be informed by the results of our Climate Vulnerability Analysis Report and our Climate Adaptation Plan. Right there with you, yeah.
Supervisor Rowan?
Hey, I had actually spoke with Ms. Maria or sent her an email, I don't remember which, pertaining to some issues that had been brought to me about the area plans. And we, I know some of them weren't techie enough to be able to get on Zoom to, in Lower Lake and some of the areas. So I had asked and requested, and I think you-
I acknowledged your email.
Yes, you did, and stated that that would work for you. But bringing her, and I just wanted to bring it out for the others as well, the other supervisors in the other areas as well, to have your team or you conduct these meetings, the area plan meetings in those areas, in those locations, in a town hall-type setting. And they would be opened to the public so that people could come and attend as we did back in like 2008, where people could attend them, and that they would be on Zoom as well. So just bringing that forward.
Given our grant deadlines and restrictions, last October/November, in four weeks, we held 46 Local Area Plan Advisory Committee meetings. It would not have been humanly possible for me to hold all of those in person in the planning areas, and that's why we chose a combination of virtual and onsite, both at the board chambers and at the planning areas. That's because we had to cover an awful lot of material in a very short period of time. We did gather great public input, and we're using that to work on our draft local area plans, which should be out later this year. Our approach this next time, since we're actually going to have drafts to work from and not, it'll be something for the whole group to focus on, and we'll distribute those widely for the purpose of gaining public input. Our goal, or our plan this next time, since local area plan advisory committees were not on the original scope of work, and so that I am the one doing them, our goal is to team up with our municipal advisory committees and councils around the lake and have combined Laypack and municipal advisory committee meetings. Should we have to add additional meetings, I will do my best to keep them in person in the planning area. But with eight different Laypacks, eight different draft local area plans, I will do so to the best of my ability while retaining my- plans, I will do so to the best of my ability while retaining my sanity. So I can't guarantee they'll all be in person, but I will definitely take advantage of those municipal advisory committees, because that's where our public is already looking to, for, as an avenue for their input.
And I really appreciate that, and I do understand the sanity portion as well.
Kind of like what little I do have left.
But I know that there are, there are people that will-
That is true, yeah. Shannon's reminding me that when we did do those in-person meetings, we had very little success in having hybrid meetings, so, so we'll, we'll work, we'll absolutely do the best we can, but for anyone in the public who wants to participate or send in their comments at any time, they can come see me, they can send me an email, they can go on to our lakecounty2050.org website and always send in their comments that way, too. So it is essential. The absolute highest priority of the Lake County 2050 process is to gather that public input.
Real quick, you mentioned back to, I think it was, community growth boundaries. You talked about cannabis activities. That's cultivation or like different dispensaries and things like that. Does that, what you're saying, does that have anything to do with medicinal? Because I know that there's been issues in some of the community growth boundaries in different areas where they thought that because it's a community growth boundary and no cultivation is to take place there, there would be folks with their medicinal plants, and then there's the idea that that shouldn't have happened there, but we were explaining to them that we can't necessarily, you know, hinder anyone from medicinal grows, if you will. And I don't know if that's-
There's a very clear differentiation between commercial cannabis and adult or medicinal personal use cannabis. The state does allow for this personal or medicinal use cultivation to take place within a residential area. We have regulations currently in Article 26 that help to control that. We have had issues where people have abused that for commercial purposes, and so that's been keeping code enforcement busy and will continue to do so. We are going to create clear delineation while still aligning with state law for personal and personal medicinal cultivation uses. We are also identifying ways that we can strengthen our public outreach and education and make it a lot more clear when we do encounter these either authentic or, you know, kind of sneaking by, trying to work the system grows in residential areas so that we'll have quicker enforcement and correction of those issues.
Thank you for explaining that.
My pleasure.
Because I know that that's been brought up and-
Another thing we should make very clear is that typically the buffers from residential areas are for cultivation activities. The other uses are cannabis-related businesses such as manufacturing, processing, things like that, retail, those can occur currently within community growth boundaries.
Thank you. My no supervisor spot, you had your pen up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that if there is a need to assist in those future meetings, we have the technology now to go anywhere in Lake County and be able to stream and do hybrids. So it was because of some of our situations that we encountered that we purchased that extra technology.
We are going to make full use of it.
Did you have your pen up?
Thank you.
No, I forgot, but I did offer as well, when you're in our district, that I would be willing to help with whatever you need.
I greatly appreciate that offer. We do rely on the supervisors as our conduits to the public as well, and we're using every tool possible.
And I really appreciate you making this, you know, available for them.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll move on to planning area boundary amendments, and then I want to just highlight the G-PAC recommendations, then I'm out of here, unless you guys have input. Planning area boundaries, okay. So we have eight planning areas. Let's just go straight to the first one. Planning area boundaries do not mean that by amending these boundaries, we focused on what community do you really align yourself with? It's kind of an intuitive thing. It doesn't affect school districts, fire districts, funding, nothing. It's just which local area plan will your community be included? Upper Lake Nice. Okay, that black line is going through Scotts Valley. Currently, half of Scotts Valley is in Upper Lake Nice planning area, the other half is in Lakeport. The lay packs both agreed that, let's amend that, I'll go back to that, let's amend to include all of Scotts Valley within the Lakeport local area plan, except for the portion of Blue Lakes. So the, I don't even know if you can see that one. Well, anyway, so the recommendation is to include all of Scotts Valley. Moving on to Lakeport and Upper Lake. No, moving over to Lower Lake and Middletown. So you'll see a dip. If you look along that, that white line, that white boundary with that black line in there, currently, the, there's a subdivision there, in that little triangular dip area that's divided between the Lower Lake and the Middletown. The recommendation is to, let's include the whole subdivision in one local area plan, just to be tidy. Let's see, what else?
Which area plan are you putting it in?
It's going to go into Lower Lake.
And that's the Hoffaker area?
Yes.
Or is that, okay.
Um, yes, I think that is it. Next one. See all those sort of scribbly little teeny black lines? Those are actually town names or road names. Those aren't recommendations. The solid black line is what we're looking at. I was starting to get confused, so I just wanted to clear that up. So this new boundary then, that is that white one that follows Socrates Mine Road. This is just more intuitive. It would then be included in the Cobb Mountain area to include areas that just sort of self-identify with Cobb Mountain.
Does that follow the district boundary?
It actually closer follows the community, the Cobb Area Council boundaries.
Which I think is the district boundary, too, after redistricting?
We do not align with supervisory districts, because this is a 20-year general plan, and supervisory districts change with every census.
And where was it?
I think it's, I think-
It was just this hard line up there in the, yeah, right there. Then there is another one, is there another, oh, shoot, there's another Cobb Mountain.
Calvert?
No, it's the one that, that adds Siegler Springs into it, so it also more closely aligns with the Cobb Area Council boundaries. And I don't know where that's, yeah, there you go, that's it, Cobb and Lower Lake. We're using a previous set of slides, sorry, we're kind of moving around. Okay, so that one, see that white triangle, that I, that, yeah, hypotenuse? That would then include the Siegler Springs community within the Cobb Mountain area. They're currently in Lower Lake. Next slide. Okay. Cobb Mountain, Kelseyville. Oh, right. So you'll see that diagonal white line, that is giving part of Cobb Mountain that's just along the Highway 175 corridor over to Kelseyville, and both lay packs were amenable to that. Good. Next one. Upper Lake Nice Shoreline Communities. Okay, there was robust discussion about the town of Lucerne. Should the town of Lucerne remain in shoreline communities, which includes Lucerne, Glenhaven, Clear Lake Oaks, Double Eagle, Spring Valley, High Valley, and the Goose Neck part of Clear Lake area? Or should it go over to the Upper Lake Nice planning area? This was discussed at, there were, there was public input submitted by the Eastern Regional Town Hall, and there was a meeting in December at the Central Regional Town Hall, which focuses, which is Lucerne and Lucerne areas, to discuss it. And they, they, the Central Regional Town Hall made a recommendation to move Lucerne from the shoreline communities over to the Upper Lake Nice planning area. So I think we'll think of a better name instead of the Upper Lake Nice Lucerne planning area. We'll probably maybe think of something catchier for that in the future. And so that is the recommendation of that lay, of both lay packs, shoreline communities and Upper Lake Nice. And that concludes our planning area boundary amendment discussion. Any questions?
Supervisor, okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. Just a quick question, because I know in the original shoreline communities, it did include the city of Clear Lake. Are we carving that out, or is it still kind of staying in there?
Both cities have their own general plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so it was, yeah, so we are correcting that by carving out the city of Clear Lake, because they're their own jurisdiction.
It felt like it was a remnant of a pre-1980 status before it became a city.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question on the Middletown line boundary to the north shortening and us losing some area there at Socrates, rather than going up a little further. So where was that, where does that come from?
That discussion followed what seemed to the lay pack to be a very intuitive alignment, and since it absolutely, like, it's not, it's not like negotiations where there's a winner and a loser, it's just a switching from, from a community that identifies more with Cobb rather than Middletown. Both of the lay packs were amenable to that request.
Hmm, okay.
I can shed some light on that. So after the Valley Fire, when the Cobb Area Council started, oh, it is on, I wouldn't yell at me.
You're deaf.
That Cobb Area Council came together and drew their own lines of the community that they wanted to be organized as. And so that was one of the corrections, and the Siegler Springs was one of the corrections. So that's the area of the Cobb Area Council. They worked, I was on it back then, had conversations with math during then to redraw those boundaries, figure out the different areas. And then it, that is a community of interest, which was determined during the census and then redistricting.
Yeah, I would like to talk to, to the Middletown area.
Yes, all planning area boundary recommendations came from in-person in the location meetings. So the Middletown lay pack, that was a really well-attended meeting, and they discussed that recommendation specifically, in person.
Okay.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open it up to the public, unless you have something-
Lastly, I just have the G-PAC recommendations. Through the two G-PAC meetings, they started looking at every single lay pack recommendation, but then actually pivoted and sort of reaffirmed that they are the county-wide advisory committee rather than the local area plan. So one of their first recommendations, and since there was significant wordsmithing, I'm just going to read them real quick to you so I don't get them wrong. One was support all recommendations of planning area boundaries that had approval of the affected lay packs. Encourage mixed use, including shared primary uses, commercial and residential, be added as an option within community growth boundaries for both new plan development and existing commercial areas. Encourage walkable neighborhood planning for multimodal transportation. Require congruence between community growth boundary amendments and ongoing sphere of influence reviews for public health and safety services. Encourage county policy to seek options to support mixed use development, including removing governmental obstacles and seeking funding options. And then lastly, preserve the agriculture land use designated areas primarily used for food production and preserve resource conservation land use designated areas. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about this? Come up speaking in the microphone, and we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you Chair, Chair Crandall and supervisors. My name's Margot Cambara. This is an extraordinary opportunity for Lake County to build the Lake County of our dreams today, and I'm very thankful for being granted a small role in this effort. I respectfully disagree with Director Turner's characterization of some of the G-PAC's conclusions. G-PAC did not endorse the lay packs recommendations as a whole. We reached a point where we found that we did not agree. The decision was made that our recommendations from G-PAC and those from the lay packs would be presented to your body, to your board for your consideration. I personally think that that's a disservice to you, because you're going to be bombarded with community input and as, as well as input from the lay packs. I thought, and some of my other colleagues feel, that the G-PAC could be a better service to you if we could be a filter and to go offline and do some independent study groups if necessary, if appropriate, but at least to give you a more considered opinion on some of these recommendations. In particular, and I don't mean to nitpick, but some of the big objections were the loss of ag lands by piecemealing, by carving out the community growth boundaries, by some parcels being zoned previously as industrial. So that takes us into, onto the slow train of losing our ag lands, which our residents value so much as our agricultural nature and the small-town feel of Lake County. If we're not careful, we can lose the agricultural nature of Lake County parcel by parcel by carving parts of a parcel out for development. And so I, I bring this to your attention. Also, if we find that the current grant structure is not meeting our needs, we're talking about the Lake County of our dreams. Maybe we should revisit the plan and the strategy for doing a general plan and local area plans that do justice for Lake County and its people. I also wanted to bring to your attention that there is strong support to preserving ag lands. I've been talking to community members and they are concerned. I also want to bring it to the granularity of the Kelseyville area plan. While some community members see the value in that having higher density zoning near the schools, it makes sense, they don't recall that being discussed at a local area plan meeting. I've asked for the minutes or the meeting notes for the Kelsey area plan of meetings. I know Director Turner is very, very busy, and she has a ton of emails, I'm sure, but this is a great opportunity, I hope we can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Real quick, I have a question. Margot, if you can, when you say you've been talking to them, who specifically is them?
There are some community members who have reached out to me, and they share concerns about our losing ag lands and, you know, and how it's getting addressed during the local area plan meetings.
And so all different area plans, is anyone specific, or?
Primarily, primarily in the Kelseyville area plan.
Okay. Thank you.
But at the general area, no, I'm sorry, yes, at the general plan meeting, there was concern within the G-PAC about the parcels in Lower Lake. So it's a theme across the county of lands that are zoned ag or can be used for ag, and if they get incorporated into the community growth boundary, well, once you lose ag lands, it's almost impossible to get them back into production.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you have something to add?
I just wanted to say that I want to still leave it open on the change in our boundaries in the Middletown area.
Did you want to?
Nothing is finalized until the board approves the general plan late next year.
Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
And that was going to be my question. We're not approving anything today. This is just a presentation of suggestions and recommendations. Our, our final approval is in the future, so just wanted to make sure that that was-
Thank you.
I still have a public comment open, so I'll go ahead and, if there's anyone else that would like to come and make comment? Anyone on Zoom? Bring it back to the board for final comment. Is there anyone else that has anything to add or any questions, or if there's anything you would like to finish with, or?
I wanted to express great appreciation to all the members that were appointed onto the lay packs and the G-PACs. We had quite a wild ride this last fall, just trying to get as much input as possible, and a lot of them hung in there. You know, we couldn't get every member at every meeting, but I really appreciate how willing they were to quickly respond to the doodle polls and to really take time to, to give us some really great input. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close this presentation. Oh, is there, there's, is there a direction? Do you have enough direction? I think that was listed on there.
The direction that I saw that got consensus was to take a look at the Blue Lakes R1 properties for amendment.
I have, I had asked about, and I believe there's been some applications come in, I don't know, they might be later in the agenda.
Yeah, what's this about? Which order?
For the, Middletown didn't have the total number of, of appointees.
Appointments for Middletown lay pack members is on a different agenda.
Okay, on, not today's, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I think, did you have something?
I was just going to comment that there's an action roster, we see the report.
Okay, yeah, let's receive the report. We just need action.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to receive Lake County 2050 update.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And thank you for.
Thank you, Maria.
On task with that, while he's chair. So we'll go ahead and take the lunch break. It's 12:38. We'll go ahead and come back at 1:40.